Said, yeah, you just.
Stick it back on.
Yeah, but I tried, but it wouldn't stick. But Terry knows she said I should have put toothpaste back in there. But it wasn't, it didn't hurt me, but I tell you what, I thought they were never gonna get it dead to me last week. Geez. So he put my temporary one back on for a month and said, don't floss back.
Better portion sizes here though, isn't it?
Yeah.
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 Well, the Chiefs did not play well.
Oh, my gosh.
Boy, they stunk it up.
It was terrible.
Washed it up, just figured out from the get-go.
Kind of expected it.
Well, I expected him to get beat, but not like that.
And then my son is living with us, one of the biggest Chiefs fans. Every time he yell, I'll turn it over to see what.
What was he yelling about?
He didn't yell much.
Yeah.
He didn't yell hardly at all.
Well, my group that lives in the middle of Liberty, Missouri are really more Bronco fans.
Yeah, their offensive line just did not show up.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, I thought their offensive line was bad the whole year though.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were. Well, you have that, you know, the Tarik, he was a medical doctor, he'd gone back to.
Yeah.
Canada, so he was the starter all of last year. Down three starters this whole year. Maybe next year, we'll just get used to saying that as a Chiefs.
You see where his fiance got in trouble because she gave, gave the network hell for showing him breathing. And now everybody's mad at her.
And then the mom was on Twitter that Brady's wife.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Must be nice to hold the ass or something.
Really?
Oh, my gosh.
Well, I kind of offered my homes when I saw him kneeling instead of standing.
That volleyball won in Independence, Texas.
Good.
They didn't play today?
Yeah, played at noon today.
They win?
Yeah.
Good.
They haven't had a record like this for hours.
No.
That's the most ones they've had.
Jeff was there.
Yeah, probably since Jeff Sanders. No, I'm defeated in conference.
I, Ali Ming's dad does my yard work. That's one of his separate jobs. And so her picture was in the town ring and a good story about it, so took it over. And I think, because our volleyball coach, real young looking, Patrick.
Uh, yeah, I mean.
Well, I don't know if it's him or assistant, but anyway, I said if he would give it to her, he said, so what if some girl came in and he said, put that up on the bulletin board? I didn't care where it went.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm starting with that.
You know, Ally had played over at Hartford.
Yeah.
Now that she transferred to Garden City.
Yeah. Uh-oh, oh, sorry. It's not my night tonight, if it ever is.
You need more napkins or you?
Oh, no, I have paper towels.
I knew. Got wet wipes over here too. We'll get you taken care of one way or another.
All right, is my chili going like potato is a regular, just regular?
I heard we don't eat it. I see.
I'm confused.
Do it your way.
I think that's all we're nice, you guys redo the elephant slide.
We were the only one that turned in a bid, nobody else wanted to touch it with the big foot hole.
Are they keeping that there?
Yeah.
We're supposed to refurbish it and repaint it and I'm like, I thought we were in the collection repair industry. Oh, it's so funny. Now, now we get in it, we're refurbishing some old 1930s tractor and I'm like, why are you? Oh, their business model is just all over the place. And I just gotta figure it out and keep up.
It's pretty bad shape, the elephant.
I haven't even seen it.
Never seen it, yeah.
I think just the fact it's been outside always.
That's what I want, yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, Skeeter, he doesn't do things small, so if there's a little bit of this and a little bit of that, it's gonna get a whole lot of everything.
I tell you, looking at the design on the new terminal, they do.
Wow.
Yeah, I just kind of saw the exterior rendering, but.
You know, it's not that to walk outside to load on the plane.
You know, it might be a better introduction, wait till they at least get their luggage before they get hit with the snow in the feedlot, you know? Give them a minute to lay it before they.
How many people are there that fly in there? Where do you get your luggage at? Where's luggage carousel? There isn't luggage. Wait for the doors to come open.
Yep. And how many people get hit with that feedlot?
Yes.
Soon as they get out the door, they're like, you know, just put my luggage back on. You promise the rest of town isn't dispatched, it's the location, it's.
I'm trying to think where we were and looked at photo, we had an A C P meeting up there. And it was the same thing, except the plane was lowered, we didn't walk, but there was snow out all the way to the plane where we walked.
Lots of handouts to go through.
I saw.
Person who started adding any audits and everything else, it was.
I was going through the board package today and I, oh, my gosh, there's a lot of stuff in there.
And they're doing their financing more or not.
More or not.
And. Right, so I'm supposed to be on the road with Chas, so far through the meeting this week, so I can, so look them in and comment here and. Okay, there's care here on the bacon bits, it's not working.
Oh, I know. I know, I had to use my teeth.
Okay, so I'm not gonna be the only one if I struggle here.
I just used the big bacon.
Well. David Edel opened my, David Edel opened my sack. My lunch, that little plastic nut actually did all. You might be hungry there a little, I'm not sure there's enough in there today.
I am not.
Let's go back and work.
Not much.
And Peter knows how good they do over there. I'm gonna meet her, we're gonna go Pinky's.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not just gonna go home and eat hamburger helper or something, mom's calling, we know she's eating good.
What's the number one choice of Pinkies?
I would get their twisted Cristo. We don't make it over there very often, so far.
They take the Nebraska football teams off schedule?
No doubt.
What'd you say?
Iowa, is that just for one year or because of the year?
What'd you say, Larry, about the football?
Well, I don't see the Iowa teams on here. And I thought maybe it's kind of away with it because of the year or if it was a forever thing.
You know, Ryan?
What's that?
Why Larry asked, there's no Iowa teams on the.
Is that just this year or is that forever?
For football? Um, because we asked them at the conference to. Come here this year and we will be separated next year, go up to Iowa. This year, we want to step down on the crowd, we need us more than we need them. There's only three of them, there's seven of us.
So in, so next year, when we ask them again?
When we asked them that, they're, the Iowa Western president retired in December. Said, you don't place demands on us. We're just not gonna play it.
It sounds like a compromise, a fair.
So. I don't know who they're gonna play.
We've got five home games and three away this year.
True.
That's good.
I was going to need to print that out. So that's good, I was gonna read this tiny one right here, but.
They started right direction, we're just gonna keep going. Melanie, I'm gonna have it, I mean, and everything. And everything, so I found that was. Well, because they show us the check register, but if there's errors in that, we've gotten that on the. Yeah.
Almost see what's discussed on that.
Yeah.
So Lindsey Clark, we just hired, did she work at the high school? That's Deb Jarmer's daughter. Yeah.
Oh, is it real?
She was like.
I thought the site visit was supposed to be in February.
We marked calendars and we had to give them free options. Work for us. So it's in November.
Not even close.
Which I think they're gonna do it that way, send us, they.
Yeah.
Sound like we're not.
Right. Pretty much we, we'll be here.
No, that doesn't work. Yeah, and it seems like a ways out there.
Well, not really.
Try to keep all your handouts. Separated out there, we'll have several different people joining us online. Some of them will pull things up and share it on the screen, but also just. Starting to get more vaccinations coming in.
I, I did, all I hear is rumbles about struggles to get. So, they're telling the health department, so they were gonna start a new website to sign up for Monday. Class pharmacy said they were starting this.
Oh, they're.
Sign on the door, I, see, I didn't hear from Benny County, I didn't hear, didn't hear, didn't hear.
Last week. But David said. Tuesday, Tuesday, I think. I don't know, they called me and said, where are you coming? I said, am I coming where? Listen, what, you're to get your vaccination, I said, oh, I didn't know I had an appointment. And it was like about two, three, there weren't very many down there, so I'm wondering if they didn't have some extras. They didn't show up. I don't know, it's okay.
You know when the college is getting theirs?
No, I mean, no. We received a. Request from Benny County to send out a survey. We've done that and sent names back, but we haven't had any information there as far as dates. I don't think it said to be towards the end of February at the, at the earliest.
Yeah, it's well organized down there.
Yeah.
And, but the, the sign on the door said, no testing here. It's just, just the vaccines and that. So I'm basically, they, oh, it's. Anyway, Paul, not, but anyway, she wondered where she could get a rapid test. And so somebody responded or a couple and said down there on Main Street that healthcare will give them, but they're like. Eighty-five dollars or something like that. But why would you pay eighty-five dollars when, you know, so somebody else did the call Genesis, they thought they would wrap it just.
I don't know, I'm sure we're in search.
But the directions on the shot. Scan the code on your phone or sign up for this thing. Every night they text me and want to know how I'm doing. Yeah, you fill out a survey like muscle spasms, nothing.
You're on shore. You're on shore.
Arm didn't hurt at all, the rest of body. And I got something wrong because I'm just, I forgot about the last month, I just had muscle spasms and it's dealing with this up here, I know, because it's real tight. And after I had a shot, I had muscle spasms everywhere, even in my little toes.
We need to move the mic further down that way.
Oh, excuse me. Is that far enough? If you want more.
You know, we don't have a microphone up there on our pictures. Yeah, because we have the picture of the border, it should be.
Should be the big one.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, my swell.
Nope.
That's what I'm going to do. That's for Valentine's gift. That's your thirty seven years. Might be the best one she ever got. Probably. Got the flowers one year and she goes, I wonder why he feels guilty about. Didn't send her flowers for a long time because I overheard that one.
Skeeter sends me flowers every Monday, so he must have a lot to feel guilty. Have to work six feet from him all day, every day, I think is what he does.
Knowing Skeeter, I'm not surprised. He's just trying to make up for the past.
Yeah.
No, he's paying ahead.
Yeah.
Once I started being in the shop full time, I think he's like, okay, so I'm going to keep the secretary and the wife. I better be nice, sir. I'm going to lose both.
That's why I. Wanting money, you want those back? Where'd you get it?
Really?
Had a box of sure. They give them one.
What's that, your shield?
Yeah. Why don't get hit it through this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, the the auction coming up out here. They got an airplane in that auction.
Should be good.
It's a shop. This is a hundred and eighty mile an hour. So Ryan, the women are not going to play tomorrow night either.
Correct.
About cloud.
Haven't heard otherwise yet.
Assume so. All the ball getting winded.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, they did.
I like these little tabs like that. That's nice.
Genius room.
Oh, I know. Well, I could find stuff that would.
Yeah.
Instead of me thumbing through everything. I told Jody yesterday, I called, when I called her, I said, yeah. It's kind of slight. So right before you lay, you call me. I have a garage door open, I'll come out so you won't have to walk. But I didn't have much on there, but I did shovel a little bit. So the next thing I know. I think I must, I don't know where it was. But my, I wondered with my phone, next thing I knew she left me a message. She had called and left me a message. She had delivered and it was on my front porch on the hose. But I, oh, I felt so bad because I didn't want her to have to get out. She said she came early because she had to get her daughter or something. Well, Kyle and I were on a webinar. Day before yesterday, it was KAC or KAC Counseling Association is putting them on. And. They're like twenty five dollars or if you're old, they're they're free for the certification. Because you can have so many things. So Paul was there and I said, is that you, Paul? Texted me. So then he said, retirement's not bad. It's from Jonathan Gally.
Are we good?
Looks out.
Okay. It is six oh one. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order Garden City Community College Board of Trustees. February meeting. So first of all, I just wanted to ask the board members, how are you guys all doing?
Good.
Okay, good, thank you. I appreciate that. This is Marilyn Douglas and I'm the chairman of the board. We'll go head and go around for a roll call.
Beth Tedrow here.
David Rock present. London Getz here.
Blake Washington present.
Shanna Smith.
Great. We have Dr. Ryan Ruda here and Judy Tool, Jody Tool, sorry, for doing our minutes. So thank you guys for being here. I am going to start with the best part of this job is is getting to congratulate people. Leadership is about making others better as a result of your presence. Blake, in your two years of leadership as chairman of the board. You have seen some swings of emotions, some highs and lows, celebrations. And you have led with grace, decorum and professional behavior in the ultimate of situations. Let alone that we had an HLC evaluation and. Repair. And let alone that we had a pandemic in all of that. So through all of those. Various issues. I found you to be very decisive, supportive. You researched when you needed to and you become innovative in in leadership and helping this college. You helped groom a brand new president to be the. Supportive administrative and innovative person that is today. So and the other mark of leadership is that you make sure that the impact of all of those changes sustains. And I will tell you that. We are going to work hard to continue those great values that you have established. So from me and all of the board, a million thank yous for all that you have done. Present you with a plaque that you can hang on your wall. Anything you'd like to say?
No, I've said enough. Thank you. All right.
I have a few comments to pass on to everybody. Garden City Community College was awarded a five thousand dollar grant from Lewis Toyota of Garden City. Thank you to them. In support of Garden City's Community College's campus closet. A service which offers items of need to the students free of charge. The grant money will help fund additional supplies and storage solutions to improve the campus closets offerings to Garden City students. Garden City Community College is honored by and grateful for their generous support from the Lewis family of Lewis Toyota of Garden City. For Hey State University Department of Social Work partnered with Garden City Community College to develop the two plus three outreach program for students in Garden City area who wish to complete their social work degree. That's cool. Students may continue their degree by taking For Hey State University courses at GCCC taught by For Hey State adjunct faculty members. The next Bachelor of Social Work cohort session through For Hey State will begin this fall, twenty twenty one, at Garden City Community College. So the faculty will be in person here. Wow, just. Introduction of new employees. All right, then I'm pleased to have Melissa for Dick present to us the audit of Garden City Community College. I think it's Teresa that with us.
And Kristen. Hello. Yes, Kristen's here too, and she's actually going to share screen and run the slideshow.
I'm not able to share my screen though right now.
Okay.
It just says host disabled participant screen sharing, so somebody might have to enable it.
Lance is working on it, Kristen.
Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and get started though. And and then when it comes up, we'll we'll move forward. You know, just just to start, feel free to interrupt as we go. You know, we've got about what twelve slides here that are trying to condense down and and give you an overview of your hundred and ten page audit report. Audited financials. So if you have questions later, want to sit down with either Kristen or myself, we're more than happy to do that. And and try to go through any questions you might have when you get a chance to to look at the audit report itself. Think Carla's distributed those out and hopefully you had the PDF copies ahead of time to to take a look at. But. Just getting started. Overall, as we look at the highlights, the the audit report itself, there's actually three reports in your bound audit report. The first one is the report on the audited financial statements themselves that show up on page Roman numeral. No, Roman numeral three through five in the report. It is an unmodified auditor's report again this year. Does stress though that what the objective of an audit is, where we're expressing an opinion on your basic financial statements, but they're fairly presented. It's an audit intended to give a. High level overview, high level of comfort of the accuracy of your financial statement. So. The other reports in the audit itself that are bound in there, the second and third report are back in the single audit section that starts on page sixty seven of the report or of the bound book. Do want to point out with those also. They indicate that there were no question costs on the federal funds and programs. No problems were identified with the operations and management of those programs. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted in the audit process as we went through it. So that speaks to the the level, the tone at the top from the board down through administration to to all the staff that are there at the college, working in the business office and everything. So we commend them on that aspect. So. Are we going to? Have any success, Kristen?
Kristen, if you try to log off and back on, that might fix the glitch. Lance says that he has you as a panelist on his side.
And we can see, see her.
Okay, I'll even try joining again.
Do you not have, Kristen, does your share screen button show up on the bottom?
Yeah, I just get, when I click on share screen, it just says host disabled participant screen sharing.
You're showing up as a panelist on our side though, so maybe if you get out and come back in.
Okay.
I got it.
Well. Tell him when she comes back. It won't take her long. There you go. Okay, I'm on the third, the third graph, Kristen, if you want to switch over to it. There we go. The third page, I guess, the third graph. Okay. Okay, so just. As I said, you've got, you, there's a lot in your audit report, a lot of financial information and everything. So just some of the highlights, starting with the basic financial statements themselves. You start on page two. And that's your your statement of net position and total assets that show up there over a ten year history for you. You'll see here in twenty twenty, we are down slightly. We were just at about forty one million, just over forty. Million at the end of the year, down from forty two point seven million in two thousand nineteen. And it had been stair stepping down since two thousand seventeen. Really that those stair steps are basically all due to the the annual depreciation that's been taken on the major capital asset acquisition that occurred in two thousand seventeen, where we saw the the larger jump. Those sixteen seventeen where you were adding the the apartment units and stuff, the Buster Suites and everything. So increased your your fixed assets in those years. But now as we're depreciating those each year, you're seeing slight declines because there have been no significant capital asset transactions in the last two or three years. The last major ones were in two thousand eighteen and a lot of those you did directly out of your cash, available cash you had on hand. So so nothing really unusual there. The other side of the statement of net position deals largely with your debt outstanding. And you don't see on a routine basis, I don't think, what those numbers are. But as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, there were about four capital lease purchases still outstanding. Plus your revenue bond for the student. Student housing acquisitions. Total principal at the end of two thousand two or two thousand twenty twenty. We just don't like to say twenty twenty. The total principal outstanding was just over seven million with the final maturity on all that outstanding debt coming up here in twenty twenty seven. Not too far away. We saw a net decrease in fiscal year twenty twenty of just under one point five million or about seventeen percent of the total debt. Hadn't had any changes or additions to the debt other. Other than the payments in the last couple of years, there were no additions. There were no additions fiscal year 20, though you did see the addition of that digital scoreboard lease that was showing up on the bottom of the previous page. Now, when you go looking for the detail of this information in your financial statements, you're gonna have to thumb through about 14 or 15 pages of footnotes that deal with the capers liability obligations and your post-employment benefits for healthcare and your capers death and disability, OPEB, other post-employment benefits. Those are all considered part of the debt of the college also, and add about 14 or 15 pages of footnotes, plus about three pages of supplemental information. So don't let that deter you. The debt information starts on page 37 of the financial statement footnotes with the summary of all the changes in the debt being on page 43, if you're wanting that quick snapshot. And Kristen has up here, as I said earlier, the revenue bond for the student housing is included in that 7.1 million of outstanding debt. That actually matures in June of '27, which would be the last maturity date of all your outstanding debt. I imagine at that point, you'll probably have added some more, but you never know, we may be debt-free at that point in time, so. Page five of the financial statements then is your statement of revenue expenses and changes in net position, and some of the highlights from it, as far as the revenue for all of the colleges' funds you'll find are reported in basically two areas. The first being the operating, and this year, operating revenues were just under 6.7 million. We were up about one and a half million, a little over 28% from where we were in fiscal year 19. Fiscal year 19 had actually been down for us about 1.4 million. So it's good to see that that's turned back around. Your operating revenue includes your tuition and fees. The majority of your grants, it also includes the auxiliary enterprises, so your dorm, the student union, and everything is in there. Now, Kristen, you're moving faster than I am. The non-operating component of your revenues this past year was just over 19 million, up a little over 2%, or 446,000. The non-operating revenues are your property taxes, the state appropriations, and is actually where the Pell and the SEOG money shows up. And then you have a little bit of investment income that goes in there. So overall, the combined total, operating and non-operating, was almost $25.9 million for fiscal year 2020. That was an increase of 1.9 million over the prior year, so your revenues were up 8% this past year. Now, the next graph. Kristen has the snapshot photo for you of the revenues by source, so you can see comparatively the components of the pie and the detail that makes that up. Just looking at 2020 here, we'll look at comparatives for multiple years in the dollars here following, plus some other detail on some of the components of the different slices here. But property taxes is the largest part of the pie at 44% this year. This past year was actually down from 47% the previous year. The second largest piece of the pie is your federal grants and contracts, and this year it was at 21% compared to 17% last year. And then the third largest piece is your state appropriations, and it's been pretty consistent at 17% the last three years, so. But looking at the dollar amounts then and how those compare over the last 10 years. Property taxes, you know, as we said, it's the largest piece of the pie. You'll see we did have an increase in fiscal year 19, and those tax dollars were up about 1.2 million. Fiscal year 20, we were up a little bit more, but not much, about 23,000 is all. Since that's such a large part of the pie, we're gonna look at it here in a minute and look at some of the components within it, what's driving those numbers. But before we do that, looking here at your other revenue sources, the state appropriations, you'll see it's been on an upward trend. The big jump that occurred there in 2014 to 2015 was when there was a change in the accounting standards, and the college had to start booking its share of the estates capers that they cover on your behalf, so that gets reported as a revenue and expense. So we saw a jump in revenue those years, and that's been ongoing. Otherwise, we're seeing after a decrease that had occurred there in fiscal year 19, we were back up here in fiscal year 20, about 507,000, so that's good. The federal grants and contracts have been on somewhat of a decline as opposed to the state appropriations there. Those revenues in federal grants and contracts are largely Department of Ed and Department of Labor grants that are coming in. In the last couple of years, there have been decreases that have occurred in the student financial aid funds that have flowed through. And in fiscal year 19, the Pell and SEOG was down 576,000, and this past year, they were down 311,000. Now, we did fortunately have an increase here in 2020 as a result of the Higher Education Emergency Relief Grant that came in, that just over a million dollars there for some of the COVID relief funding. The student tuition and fees area has been on an upward trend. We worked down a little bit in fiscal year 19, but a lot of that came back up in fiscal year 20. You know, overall, your credit hours and headcount, FTE, is a big part of those numbers. And over the 10-year period, we saw an increase of just under 8,000 credit hours in that 10-year period. But in fiscal year 19, it took a drop of 7,000 hours. We had about a 13% decline. We were down again a little bit here in fiscal year 20, about not quite 1,800 hours. Fiscal year 20's credit hours were really about the lowest it's been in the last six years. Now, from the perspective of what's ahead, it's my understanding that the fiscal year 21 headcount is maybe up slightly, if not flat. So hopefully, we're not continuing that downward trend there, so. Auxiliary enterprise, that's where a lot of the student union dorm and stuff is. It's been down here the last couple of years. Understandable is the credit hours impact those numbers also. Then I had mentioned the state operating, state appropriations. The next slide has a little more detail about that. The information behind this slide is actually on page Roman numeral 12 of your financial report. In 2011, the gap between the amount of the actual grants that the college receives versus the red line across the top being the taking from the base in 2003 and just increasing that annually by the CPI inflation rate. We had a gap in fiscal year 11 of about 657,000, and that gap has increased over the years. In fiscal year 20, we were at 788,000. Gap between what you're receiving from the state and that inflation factor, that did narrow, because in fiscal year 19, it was a gap of 881,000. Your grant revenue that came in in fiscal year 20 was up about 3.75%, which helped narrow that gap a little bit. But you're dealing with that gap by covering those costs that might be associated there with tax dollars, basically. So it's the equivalent of about 1.58 mils to just make up for what the state shortfall is there. The other large component then of revenues that we had mentioned earlier were the tax dollars. And looking at the three areas that go into that based on the mill analysis that you find on page Roman numeral 12 of your financials, assessed valuation is the first factor going in there. You'll see there that we hit a high in 2014 with valuation of about 532 million. And then unfortunately, we had that big decline that we took the hit for in 2016 largely because of the oil and gas valuations. We were back up here in recent years. 2020 valuation for budget purpose was 498 million, basically the same as 2018 with the short, or small decline rather, in 2019, that intervening year there. That assessed valuation then impacts the mills that get assessed. And this mill levies, they look somewhat deceiving here on the chart because you need to really pay attention to what the scale is on the left side of that chart, because there's only five mils spread across there, and that's not very much over a 10-year period. Below in 2011 to the high here in 2020 averages out to 21.384 mils per year. 2020, we were at 23.688 mils. That's only up one and a half mils from fiscal year 19. So the scale makes the picture look deceiving, but we've only increased a total of 3.446 mils over that 10-year period. So you've done a very good job holding the mill levy steady there, even considering the fact that you've had some pretty significant purchases in the last few years with the Buster Apartments and everything that you've added in. So between the assessed valuation and the mill levy determines the total taxes that are levied there in that final chart on this page. And you can see we've gone from 2011, we were just under 10 million, to here in 2020 at the high point, and we're under, just under 12 million. So this year, we did have a slight increase of about $1 million in the tax receipts. Part of that is, as we said earlier, because of the change in the mill levy, but then part of it is also realized because of the increase in the valuation that you received. Then the other side of the component in your financials is your expenses. And your operating expenses, just looking at fiscal year 2020's piece of the picture first. You'll find this graph on Roman numeral page 13 in your financials. There's four pieces that make up the majority, and those four are the same, same largest four that were there in the prior year. Instruction is the highest part at 30%, down a little bit. Last year, fiscal year 19, it was 31% compared to 30% now. Student services, though, it did go up. This year, it was 20% compared to 17% in the prior year. Then you'll see institutional support and operating and maintenance of the plant are tied for third and fourth place. They're both at 12%. Operating and maintenance has been 12% for the last three or four years now. Institutional support is down a little bit, and that's where some of the increase then was picked up in student services. So that was the current year. If we look at the next graph, it'll give us the dollar amounts that you'll see then over the 10-year history, so you can kind of see where the trends have been. In total, your operating expenses for fiscal year 2020 were up about 2.2 million, about 9.4% overall. That's after fiscal year 19 had been down about 889,000. So just picking some of that back up and then some of your unusual expenses you've had to deal with here with the pandemic and everything over the last fiscal year, fiscal year and a half now. Instruction has gone up, as you see there. In fiscal year 20, it was up 661,000 largely because of increases experienced in health insurance and faculty salaries. And then capers was also part of the picture there, and it was up about 441,000. Fiscal year 19 had been down about 793,000. A large piece of that decline was due to capers again. And then in fiscal year 19, the ammonia program was also phasing out there. Fiscal year 18 had seen an increase of about 1.3 million from the previous year and brought you back to about where expenses were in fiscal year 2010, which has dropped off the graph now at this point in time, but. You do see in the student services, a large increase there for fiscal year 2020. That's largely because of the funding from the emergency grants for the dorms and room and board. Institutional support has been fluctuating in the last few years. We saw a big decline in fiscal year 18, rather, is that decline there? But that rebounded and came back up in fiscal year 19, but back down again here in fiscal year 2020. And that area includes your administration, HR, the IT and legal fees and stuff also, so. You'll understand why that's reflective of what it is. The auxiliary enterprises, that's the category your dorm, book sales and such are falling into. And I think the last graph we have is on the next slide, and this is your expenditure of federal awards. The federal grant information shows up on pages 91 through 92, and then I think this graph may actually be on page 98 of the bound financial statements. But here in 2020, you'll see we are back up. You dealt with 23 grants this past year at the college. 11 of those were major programs, which meant that the federal government required that they have detailed compliance procedures performed on and in the audit process. And so, as I indicated, there were no problems noted in. And so, as I indicated, there were no problems noted in what we saw there. Fiscal year 2020 here, the expenditures were about 6.2 million. That's up 710,000 from the year before. And like I said earlier, a large part of that is because of the 1 million you received from the higher education emergency relief fund. The student financial aid office was actually down about 311,000, so kind of offset there. And, and left you with an increase overall. Fiscal year 19 in comparison, the total federal expenditures were about 5.5 million and had been down about 1.5 million. The largest part of that being in the financial aid office where, when it was down 1.1 million in fiscal year 19. Dollar wise, 19 was down, but you actually managed and worked with 25 federal grants in fiscal year 19 as compared to the 23 here in 2020, so. So that's the highlight of the colleges side of the financial statements. The, the financial statements themselves on page two, two and three and page five, I believe it is, they do include the endowment association and the BAA. Endowment Association's net assets, net position was up this past year 180,000 and they were at 6.4 million compared to 6.2 million the prior year. BAA, its net position was up about 74,000 and ended the year at 109,000. So that, so those are reflected in there. Their footnotes are summarized also in the, in the footnotes for the college, so. So before I turn it over to Kristen to run through the management letter and the letter to the governing body, I'll ask if there's any questions that it's kind of hard to, to see and, and respond from a remote position, seeing a little picture. So if there's any, any questions, I'll, I'll try and address them if, if you have any. Hearing nothing, Kristen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you proceed, I guess, with the management letter comments.
Okay, um, starting with the management letter, if you're looking at it, the college staff did a great job during the year. As we have no comments to report on for the college as a whole. And the two comments that we did have on last year's letter were moved to resolve during the year. So with all the changes during the year due to COVID, the college staff did a really good job on making sure that there were still controls in place with working remote at times and the business office being closed. We did however, have some best practice suggestions for both the endowment association and BAA. We went over all of the comments in detail with Brian, Carla and Deb, and also with the staff involved. However, for the endowment, we're meeting with their finance committee tomorrow evening to go over the financial graphs with them in detail and also go over their management comments in detail. And then I think Carla's planning on going over the audit in detail with BAA and their staff. The next letter we have is the letter to the governing body. This letter is the same as it's been in the past. It just gives you a quick summary of the audit process. It states what our responsibility as an auditor is versus management's responsibility in preparing the financial statements. It also states the planned scope and timing of the audit. For the college, there were no changes in accounting policies during the year. And due to estimates being based on management's judgment, the letter lists the most sensitive accounting estimates that affect the financial statements, which are depreciation expense, outstanding encumbrances and accounts payable, the capers pension plan expense and that pension liability and the OPEB liability. And then also because certain financial statement disclosures involve judgment, it lists out the most sensitive disclosures that complies with Kansas statutes. Professional standards also require us to accumulate all known and likely adjustments we identified during the audit. So attached to this letter are any past journal entries, adjusting journal entries and reclassifying journal entries that we make as part of the audit process. With this letter, we also let you know there were no disagreements with management during the year. And attached to this letter are also the management representations which were signed by management. And we aren't aware of any consultations with other accountants or any other significant findings that we felt we needed to make you aware of as part of the audit. So with those two letters, does anybody have any questions on those?
Somebody have any questions? Hey, so basically what I hear is, is that your report to the board is that the audit is favorable and there are no, no serious recommendations.
That's a, a fair summary, Marilyn. They're in the business office are, are doing a good job. Like Kristen said, they dealt with the pandemic and work in remote well. Not very often that you would have a letter with no comments to that, to that extent in the circumstances you were dealing with in the current year. So, so there to be commended there and we appreciate the assistance they provided us throughout the audit process also.
We appreciate you guys. Thank you for doing an excellent job. And I would just, again, I'd pass on the same appreciation to the business staff for their commendable work and for working with these guys. So thank you. Anything else from the board?
I would just like to say that, um, thank you to Teresa and Kristen for being there for us as we work through the unknowns. And also I would like to commend Deb and the business office staff and everybody in campus. It takes all of us to, to succeed through travel requests, little things that just add, can add up to big things. So it makes me smile when we have this report, but it takes all of us. So thank you.
Well, like we indicated, we're, Kristen and I, we're more than happy. If you're looking through stuff and have questions later, please reach out to us and, and we'll see if we can provide the answers for you.
Thank you.
Kay, have a good evening.
You too. You going guys? You okay? All right, let's move on to item two, the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they'd like to pull? I would like to pull item D, approval of the tuition fees from the board.
Ma'am Chair, I would move that we approve the consent agenda. A, B, C and E and hold D for further discussion.
We have a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call.
Beth, yes?
Marilyn, I. So the consent agenda is approved. Items A, B, C and E. And I, I just pulled D to allow some comment from President Ruda in regards to the tuition being increased to explain to our, our audience.
Wanted to, in your packets, there is information, but I wanted to highlight some things that we have brought forward there as far as some tuition structure changes for this next year. At the very heart of it there, we are recommending the $1 per credit hour increase on tuition and a $2 per credit hour increase for student fees. The student fees will be used to offset not only student scholarships, but as well as student activities and overall technology resources that are available to students. So in your, in your packets, if you could reference on page 37, we've also included a breakdown of where the student fees are allocated just for to open this information, it breaks down exactly the various classifications of student fees. So this next year, we're proposing a total of $53 on student fees. And you can see from the chart above there, the whole innovation of how this break into each of the different classifications. Additionally, we are requesting to the board approval to initiate a new tuition structure that will be specific to Fannie County residents. Garden City Community College has not had a separate Fannie County tuition structure in place previously. Administration's requesting a new tuition structure for Fannie County residents, which will hold tuition flat this next year at $61 credit hour. It's our belief that implementing this tuition structure will add value of Garden City Community College Fannie County residents, as well as providing a, an avenue for stakeholders to receive educational benefits in terms of college. So we will be requesting a tuition increase of $1 per credit hour on all tuition structures, with the exception of, if approved, Fannie County tuition as well as online, holding online flats as well. And then the student fees would be increasing $2 per credit hour across all fee structures, except for online, which we will be holding online, recommending holding flat on the online. The room and board, we're recommending that we hold our room rates flat for this next year. We are not proposing or recommending an increase on the room rates. However, on the board plans, on our meal plans, we are recommending an increase of 3% CPI increase. And this will go towards the service of a contact request. Just a couple of other points to make on page 38 of your board tactics. We have also included the cost comparison of room and board rates in comparison with the other 19 community colleges. One point to note on this is that these rates have not been approved by all Kansas community colleges. So many of these rates are consistent with where they are currently at on room and board. So it gives you a reflection of where Garden City will be at next year with our increase on board, relevant to where all the other community colleges are at currently, that they're in the process of approving this month and next month. And then the last reference point would be just like page was 39 through 44. I want to provide a cost comparison that shows again where Garden City Community College's proposed tuition fee structure will be in comparison to the other 19 Kansas community colleges. Again, then these institutions are in the process of approving their tuition fees. So what is represented on all other institutions other than Garden City is where their current tuition and fee structure is for this year. So, you know, as we look at that, our tuition fee structure keeps us very affordable among the loads, the middle comparisons in almost each of the tuition fee models. And we feel represents a continued great benefit there for students if we go forward. Be happy to answer any questions.
Page 38 there, what's the options?
Okay, so option one is the bus call. Option two would be more. Option three is the fees. And then option four is the.
Any other questions?
Coffeeville stays a low on lawn residents.
I think they, I think they do, just from past history that I knew Leonard is that because they're right there by Missouri, they're right there by Oklahoma and Coffeeville and Independence. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, but Coffeeville and Independence, Sherrick County. So I think they do it to, at least when I was here, they do it to recruiting purposes. If I'm wrong, correct me, but that's the way it was. I think, what are they, 12 miles from, or are they even 12 miles from, from Oklahoma? No, it's less than that, isn't it? Because you don't know when you go from South Coffeeville to North Coffeeville.
Well, I am glad to see the, the new rate for Fannie County residents. And I don't know why we didn't think of that before because you know, it's our Fannie County residents that pay taxes for this school to operate. So I'm happy to see that rate created. And I feel like we're still in line with all the other colleges. So I'm happy with this increase. There's any other comments? I would entertain a motion to approve item D as presented.
I would move that we approve item D in the consent agenda.
All second, Shanna. So a motion in a second to approve the tuition fees room and board is presented. Any other questions or discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Beth approved.
David, I. Leonard, I.
Blake, I.
Shanna, I.
Marilyn, I. Thank you guys. We're on to item three in the agenda confirmation of monitoring reports on page 46.
Yes, on the essential skills. Yeah, I would like to ask Brandy, Andrew, Ryan, Ellen and Samantha going in there before, before. going in there, but before, before we turn it over to them, I just wanted to highlight the extraordinary work that's being completed by the faculty in the assessment process and the faculty leadership from the student learning assessment team. It's been a significant amount of work encapsulated, what we presented, essential skills. This is all as a part of the academic assessment on general education outcomes, which are the essential skills. So I'd like to introduce Samantha Singer, Brian McCallum, and Brandy Hunru, who will be presenting and walking through the general education essential skills monitor. Welcome, guys.
Hi, welcome.
I think, Brian, you were starting off first, is that correct?
Sure. So hello, board.
Hi, Brian.
I'm the, I'm the chair of the student learning assessment team, and we're comprised, just give you a brief overview. We're comprised of five faculty, two academic and two tech, and also the assessment coordinator, Samantha Singer. And this year rolled into SLAT, the Gen Ed Assessment Committee, so or the essential skills are also a part of SLAT this year. The current processes work basically this way. Each program will assess two essential skills, which gives us a tremendous amount of flexibility within our programs in case we might lack majors or, you know, from semester to semester, whatever it might be. Really, what we're trying to do is maintain a rotation of the essential skills so that every five years, we assessed all of the essential skills within each program. Some of the improvements that we've made within that process is that we've revised our assignments to better meet the expectations of the essential skills and revise our program curriculum to scaffold the skills, so that by the time students are sophomores and we're assessing them, they have a better idea of what, you know, what we're asking them to do. Let me just refer to my notes and make sure I know what I'm up to. Oh, yes, updates to our essential skills and our definitions. So this is also something that we've done this year. Through our consultation and constant feedback with our faculty, we've revised our social responsibility and diversity rubrics, reflect our institutional understanding of these terms at level. We also shifted our social responsibility focus from civic identity and engagement to social responsibility. We've revised the language and we ask each program to consider revising the language for their own program. And in addition, we're working toward a consistent application of the rubrics within each program. And we also removed the plus minus system, so we have more consistency when it comes to grading our rubrics. And to give you a, an update on general education assessment, I'll turn it over to Sam Singer.
Thank you. Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
Thank you. The biggest achievement of academic assessment is that our processes are becoming embedded. They're, they're no longer seen as new and somewhat awkward. We've, we figured out how they work for our programs, our faculty are buying into them. They're just becoming part of the way we do business, which is of great benefit to our faculty, our students, and our programs. We, we are establishing a culture of assessment and some of the original kind of trepidation that exists around assessment and fears of it being punitive or used in a negative way are much more calm. And we're seeing it all as continuous improvement in ways that we reflect on ourselves and our own programs and revise to make things the best for our students. As Brian said, the programs are working their way through the essential skills. It's a lot to throw five of them at a program at once, so we certainly did not do that. We're asking them to consider two a year and start looking at a new one for next year, so they take the time to read through those rubrics, interpret what those skills mean for their program and their students, and what they look like at level for associate's degree or sophomore level students. One of the things that's gone along with this that's really helped with the buy-in and the embedding in the culture is allowing, encouraging, helping programs understand that the four-point scale doesn't mean every student has to earn a four. The four isn't always the target. It may be the ideal world, but if we all score threes, maybe that's appropriate for your program and a great goal for your program. So programs are working at setting appropriate targets within those rubrics for what is acceptable for their program, what is ideal for their program and their students, as well as keeping in mind our community college standing. All of this, as I said, results in increased ownership and buy-in. It makes meaning to the program themselves and the faculty involved and helps them help their students find meaning in these skills and make them relevant. We did include quite a bit of data in your packet this year. You have both the data from last year, from twenty eighteen, nineteen, as well as twenty nineteen data. We do want to be cautious in trying to draw comparisons between the two sets of data. As we reported last year, it was preliminary data, we're still working on processes and fine tuning and understanding what those numbers mean. And obviously, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty data has to reflect our current pandemic situation. The abrupt move online due to COVID inherently impacted classroom practices. And so some programs that were up to do a certain essential skill, the project that they had planned, simply didn't convert to online very well or in the amount of time we had left. So some of that data is less than what we would expect had we been in a more traditional semester. But that doesn't mean the information we learned from it isn't valuable, as you can see reflected in a lot of the comments that were included from what programs learned in looking at the data themselves. We also want to use caution when looking at the data and remembering that that four-point scale isn't necessarily the ideal scale. Especially, this is especially true, if you look at the social responsibility rubric, one of the items to score a four on, students have to start a community project and like go out and establish it, create it, get the volunteers for it, and get it engaged. That's fabulous. But if you look at a three, students are involved in a community project. They may not create it, they may not be the ones running it, but they're involved in the community. That's also great. If we get everybody in the world to get to a three, we would have a wonderful world. So as our faculty do, as our students do, as our programs do, it's important to look at what the criterion are asking for before we determine what is an appropriate score that we'd like people to be earning. And Brandy is going to cover coming up next in assessment in SLAT.
Okay, so we've been collecting data now for several semesters, and we're working on what that means and how we can use it. So faculty's gotten really good at collecting it, but we have a lot of questions about what that means. So we're going to start having conversations, not with, or continue having conversations with faculty, but then start having conversations with everybody on campus about assessment, how they can help and how they can use the information. We want the essential skills to be part of our language across campus. When students hear us talking about those as faculty, they're starting to learn about them, but we want our staff and everybody that's involved to be familiar with it. We're also going to start looking at, do we want to set a target as an institution? Where do we want to be as an institution with the expectation of our students and our scoring? And then we also are looking at how to introduce our essential skills across the board to our co-curricular activities, such as clubs, athletics, and student services, so that we're not, it's not just in the classroom, but it's, again, across campus. One of the things that, as, as a tech faculty, we had a lot of questions about these five essential skills, and when we have programs, I'll use welding, for example. One of their certificates is only seventeen credit hours, so they get it done in just a few short weeks, and five essential skills was a lot to assess in addition to what they were trying to teach. So for the spring, this spring right now, we are piloting employability skills as, as another form of assessment for students that are in the associative applied science and certificates. We're going to focus on problem solving, work ethic, and communication. We chose those three because the three of them align with those five essential, five essential skills. We basically just took five and wrapped them into three. We currently feel like that's doable even in our short programs because they'll be able to take existing assignments and assess them using one of those topics, one of those skills. What we found when we were looking at the essential skills is the writing rubric was very much focused on how to write a paper or how to write a report and not so much on maybe a welder or someone in John Deere and the way that they do their written communication. So our communication employability skill takes written and oral and combines it together. So maybe they're going to be assessed on a customer interaction or an email request or something like that, where they're actually using what they're being taught. I think you have copies of the, the rubric drafts that we're using. There's a few of us in the tech programs that are going to highlight these for this semester, and then we're hoping to implement them fully in the fall.
Just as a side note to what Brandy's speaking about, the employability skills preview starts on page sixty-one of your packet for you to peruse at your
Well, I think the one thing there too that I would, that I would echo from that I would, I would direct your attention there, now the marks put you to page sixty-one, I would turn back to page fifty. Because it's not just flowery and blah information, it's not just positive information you're receiving through this assessment process. And you know, as, as indicated on page fifty, there's some program insights and comments that was about where Art has found that the assessment, the assignment that they are using is probably not the best document. So they are reevaluating, learning from the assessments, how it is that they need to continuously improve their process. Same thing with nursing. They mentioned that they found it difficult to match up test questions, and that they will be looking at other ideas, possible courses to determine if there's a better tool. So, you know, again, it is not, it's not just bringing the positive news of the assessment, because assessment is truly a continuous learning process, you're continuously learning how it is that we need to adjust, make changes, similar to what Brandy had mentioned there on what's working for the technical programs on the search side. So, you know, I applaud the work and the effort of all the faculty and the, and the work that the SLAT team has done, because it's a different amount of work that has brought us to this point, and a lot of great things have come in there.
And I would echo that, but I'm getting a real sense of dedication from these folks in seeing that these students and this institution leader have a great educational experience that they can rely on. When they go out in the world and they talk to people where they went to school, they've got a positive influence on everyone that they talk to because of the efforts that you folks are putting into having a great experience for them, right? And thank you for that. Targets are good. Back off that with targets.
We're happy to answer any questions if anyone has, has something for us.
Samantha, this is Marilyn. I got a couple of questions. When the SLAT team is doing the assessments, is it the, the members of the SLAT team that are going out and assessing the programs? Or is it the faculty assessing their own program? And is it questions of the faculty or of the students or all of them?
You wouldn't take that, Sam, or do you want me to?
I can, and then you can jump in if you have something else, right? So program faculty assess their own programs and their own students.
Okay.
Largely, this is because when we look at the essential skills, they're universal, but they're also tailored to programs. So not everyone critically thinks in the same way. An art major is going to critically think in a different way than a nursing major. So we want nursing majors to critically think like nurses. We want art majors or crime justice majors to critically think for their field. The best people to understand if their students are doing that are the experts in the field, so the faculty themselves, the program faculty. So they are the ones doing the assessment based on using a tool or an assignment from the course they identify within their program as the best place to collect data, where's the best place students can show off their oral communication skills in the crime justice program. Okay, it's in this class, our assignment, do we have, what tool do we use to assess oral communication of those students? And the program faculty are tasked with doing that. SLAT is more of a facilitator. And we collect everyone's data together and compile it together. We look for ways to improve our processes, conversations we need to facilitate to help understanding of what the rubrics mean or to help programs or institutionally us improve our understanding of those or the way our processes work.
Right, so I would add that what SLAT would do perhaps in terms of assessment and helping other faculty and supporting them is we might say something like, hey, Mark Malone, we noticed that in your classes you haven't performed your assessment or you haven't turned it in this year. What can we do to help you and support you to get that done? And so that's really what we do. We don't do the assessment or any of that, if that, so I think Sam spoke well on that.
And then I would talk about that the essential skills are part of the policy governance that we have set for the college. And you, you mentioned setting a bar or, or a goal. In our policy governance, we don't have anything that defines what the goal is. We just say that you guys will have students that demonstrate or exhibit or develop cultural diversity, social responsibility, critical thinking skills. So I like the idea that you guys are taking that one step forward and defining that for each of the programs, realizing that it is different in different programs and different levels of employment. And I think the employability skills that you came up with adequately reflect diversity and responsibility and critical thinking for welders, for car mechanics, for EMTs, so I think from our standpoint, you're doing, you're doing the right thing. Do you guys have comments or questions?
It's just great to see the cooperation between faculty and the staff.
Good job.
Want to make sure credit is given where credit is due. SLAT did not come up with the employability skills rubrics. That was tech. That was Brandy and Patsy Zeller and Kurt Wenzel, who identified a need we had and were willing to step up and work on drafting those rubrics and making sure they were appropriate to tech side. And SLAT is kind of just like the formal body of approval that says these look great and gave a little, all of that's for tech.
Yeah, and I would echo that and say that, you know, a lot of the changes that we made really are coming from faculty. It's not, it, it, SLAT is, again, it's support and facilitation of what faculty need, trying to understand how we're doing in the assessment process, getting our processes down to make sure that as we move forward, we can really make some substantial changes based upon our data that we're, we're collecting, but so hopefully that helps.
Yeah. One more question, just pushing it one more point. The work that you guys are doing is fitting what HLC is looking for, yes?
Yeah, I, I would say that just to comment on that, I think HLC just basically wants to know, do you have an assessment process and can you speak about it? And I think we've accomplished that. You know, they're not going to determine what that needs to look like. We're determining what that needs to look like for us, and I think we're doing a pretty good job at it.
I would agree with that. I think the, the major thing that HLC wants to understand is that we have a process that looks at student learning from a different that looks at student learning from a different perspective than on the ground with a grade on an assignment or in a course. And they want to know that we have that process and that that process produces some information that assists with quality continuous improvement, rather. So that's the major focus of it. And I think that one of the things that this report shows throughout the comments and in the data itself is that this information is being used for quality improvement, both improvement of the assessment process so that the data is meaningful, but also in conversations that extend beyond. But how can we continue to further embed these skills, not just in the classrooms, not just in their programs, but extending beyond throughout campus so that students really do have an understanding that I, as a student, have an understanding of what it is to communicate clearly and effectively. It's not an abstract concept. They know how to apply it in their area of interest. And I think that that's a really good thing. The answer is yes, for short one.
I like it. Okay. Awesome. Okay. We'll accept your guys' report as presented. Thank you. Next item is eight-two or eight eight-two, yeah, annual executive limitations, personal enrichment. That's on page sixty-five in your packet.
Yeah, so what we have, what we presented here and I'll give Mark a walk through this here as well. Really addresses or represents the program that has taken place there, both through personal enrichment, continuing to add if you remember back over a year ago, we had worked with economic development to have them be an active partner and helping to promote, bring on some of these things. But we've also really diversified a lot of how it is that we offer this type of program. And it brought on some online tools that are going to be highlighted and discussed in here. But, you know, I think the other, the other side of this and we talked about this as far as this year goes. There wasn't a lot of face-to-face programming that occurred for continuing yet and a lot of these interest classes were saying that, you know, we have a significant amount of ideas, we have a significant amount of planning that's gone into how we want to diversify, how we want to take programming forward. But a good majority of that entails us coming back in person, being able to have capabilities of face-to-face instruction. With that said, we've also, with the online tools, been able to bring forward opportunities that have a significant amount on page six and seven, a significant amount of offerings through both Ed2Go and HealthEd today that indicates the various types of courses that individuals are taking regarding city community following the personal enrichment. Just highlights a variety of different courses that are available. Mark, I'll come and you'll turn it over to you there if anything else you want to add.
I would echo everything that you said, Dr. Ruda. There were slight decreases in the number of face-to-face offerings and also attendance or people involved in those. And the same with our online, our online options are provided, as Dr. Ruda mentioned, by two third-party providers that we work very closely with, Ed2Go and HealthEd today. There was a decrease again in those also. One area of this report that I would say that the institution is really doing a good job with is that second area of that, which is the outreach will serve the needs of the community. And that's really where the partnerships that the institution has with Finney County Economic Development, with our workforce agencies, with our K-12 educational partners. It really shines through, it's through that work that we've done most of our program additions like carpentry and certified machine mechanic. It's through those partnerships that we have the work with empirical foods, ensuring that we are continuing to tailor things available at the institution to the needs of our community partners. And I would stand for any questions you may have.
Are these online courses? A lot of them are self-paced and various ones, are they? I mean, obviously, it's kind of tailored one, two students, but affordable or free or what? I mean, is there a lot of cost? Is that something that's preventing maybe some of that or just kind of, I'm sure there's a wide margin depending on what it is and whatnot, but cost-wise to those?
So, sure, they actually vary quite a bit. And the course delivery mode also varies quite a bit. So some of these are absolutely self-paced courses and others of them are absolutely led by instructors at given times. So that varies and that impacts the cost a little bit. I couldn't tell you what costs off of the top of my head. I know that when we get to the opportunities provided by HealthEd today, those are significantly more expensive in the one to $2,000 range, but they are also preparing people specifically for industry credentials at the same time. So there is a large cost spread between a self-paced QuickBooks tutorial versus we're getting you prepared for H-back. So I'm not sure if that answered fully your question. And they're, because they're provided through partnerships, we do, we do not get to set the costs on those. And we also don't really recoup cost on those. We provide them as a service to community.
Mark, the, I was just looking at pharmacy technician. Is that a full course that someone can go from start to begin, start to end and become a pharmacy tech?
I would need to look at, I would need to look at that specific course. But I believe that that course is one that leads to an industry credential. I'm not sure at what level it does. But that is, that's an example of the HealthEd Today course where the cost is more, the level of involvement is higher for the student and the instructor. And I believe it does lead to a credential. I can certainly follow up on that specific course if you'd like me to.
Yes.
I will do that and we'll get you some information in the next couple of days.
All right. Any other questions about this monitor and how the and how the college is answering it? I think they're doing a great job. At least they've stepped up to the plate in figuring out what to offer because there was, for a while there, we didn't have much because we didn't know there was some decreased interest in personal enrichment.
One thing I would add, we have two new building secretaries starting. Jeanette Hernandez is starting, started actually last week as a building secretary for fine arts. And Lindsay Clark is starting next week in the math and science building. And we have this sort of dream of how to get more of the face-to-face operating, face-to-face offerings ready to go for when we are able to do face-to-face again. So we're also not resting on our laurels, waiting. We're working on getting this back up and going because I do think that, you know, when we think about personal enrichment courses, you know, woodworking is an important offering for people to feel like their community has something for them to stay engaged with their own personal interest, cooking classes, movie viewings, those types of things are things that we can bring back. We just went over and kind of raided a filing cabinet for everything we did in the last seven years. And then we found an old printed booklet of offerings from, I think it was 2011, maybe. So we are, we remain conscious of this as a focus of the institution.
I would say too, just from the medical perspective, for people to develop hobbies and get ideas from the college is a good thing. So go ahead and build on that. Okay. Next monitoring report is page three, executive limitations, general executive constraint number seven. It's on page sixty-nine. The president shall not allow for purchases between 10,000 and 50,000 without first giving consideration to local Finney County businesses with a maximum 10% premium. And you have President Ruda's report there. It looks good to me too. I would say we accept it as presented. Does anybody have any other comments? Okay, perfect. All right. It is 7:25. Do we need a break? Okay. Let's take a five-minute break. And we'll be back at 7:30.
Do you have a motion?
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we have a five-minute break and come back at 7:31?
Yeah. Cell phones are saying 7:26.
I had to take a break because I was choking. I needed water.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. So five-minute break?
Sure.
That's okay.
I just got choked up and I thought, this is going to be embarrassing.
No worries.
My son-in-law had a heart catheterization this morning and they had to put a stent in. But that's better than having to do a bypass. We were really worried.
So he's always sad.
For, yeah, his whole family, I mean, all the men have weak hearts.
Yeah, that's, that's scary.
Yeah, because I know they, when the doctor said, calls in, I knew he'd been taking tests and doing stress tests and stuff like that. But when the doctor calls and says, I need you and your wife both to be on the phone on, at 6:45 this morning. Or no, I guess it was last week. We were all really worried. He's only so, he's 58, he'll be 59 in May.
Just wrist and
Yeah. Yeah.
It's too young.
Oh, yeah. And it was something about, I didn't understand all the things she said, but like the levels you're supposed to be at were like forty to seventy or something or 400 to 700. And he was up at 900. And then the input, it was like he was at less than 40% or the output, I guess. And so the left lower ventricle or the one that drains out was practically all clogged up. So they put a new stand in. He's back home. And we were worried he was going to have to have bypass surgery and everything else. He was doing that while I was in a root canal and I said, hello, baby? What are you worried about a root canal for? I am sorry that I didn't meet you at the car.
Oh, there is no worries at all.
I did, I had, I mean, you know, just brushed a little bit off. But it was still all flicky.
It wasn't too bad.
I was so worried about her. And I think what happened, I just, I went into the bedroom and left my phone and I heard it. I heard it beep that I had a message on it.
Oh, no. There was really no problem at all. It was just a dusting on your sidearm.
Yeah.
Yeah. So don't take that, no, I just, well, I got it fixed.
We are going to have a watch party here on campus.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask. And because that's, that's in my notes because it said I was supposed to give my president, see if we could have a watch party.
Yeah. So we're going to, I think Jody's looking on getting the room and everything set up.
Yeah.
We'll invite the board to students and their families.
Yeah. That'd be great.
Yeah, we're doing a virtual.
Yeah. Yeah, and then we're at eight o'clock the Saturday morning after that. I was so dry. I thought, if I start coughing or choke, I mean, it was the tickle. I hear you. Thank you, ma'am. Did you move from Pennsylvania here or somewhere way off?
Illinois.
Illinois, okay, because that's why I thought, I have had so many, you know, on all this darn medical reimbursement and all that. And can you, I have had calls from all over and I just quit asking them. So when I saw Jody's, because I wanted six-one-seven or something, six-one-eight. Six-one-eight, I don't know, I didn't sure it. And then I realized I had a message and it would revert and I really felt like a crumb.
Okay, we are back in order. Yep, we're all here, right? Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is item three D, that's reviewing the monitoring reports. Do you want to pull out your policy governance books? And we are looking at page thirteen and page fourteen. And I'll just give you a moment to read through those, but I really, as the governance officer, I don't have any anything to offer as far as whether we need to make any changes in the language, but I would entertain any discussion that you might have on that. We'll start with page thirteen first. That's the information and counsel to the board. Everybody's happy with the information that they received. Feel like it's in a timely manner and you're getting the appropriate topics and getting your questions answered. Chanda?
Yeah. I have nothing better to add.
Okay. And then the second one is on page fourteen. This is about asset protection. Questions or leave any discussion? David? Yeah?
No, I'm fine.
All right. We'll leave those to We'll leave those to policies that are presented. Okay. We are at agenda item number four, public comments. And I would just like to remind the board that we do have a policy about public comment, and I'm just gonna review that with you. First of all, that it is limited to thirty minutes, and it's five minutes per individual. Comments should be relevant to matters over which the board has authority. Speakers need to respect the rights of all persons, and they should not engage in personal attacks or disruptive behavior. This time is not intended to be a question and answer period. The board cannot take any binding action on matters that are not on an agenda. The board has the right to conduct an orderly, efficient public meeting. Comments from the public to the board should pertain to our ends, which include mission, essential skills, work preparedness, academic advancement, personal enrichment, and workforce development. Any comments regarding CEO need to be directed to the CEO, not the board of trustees. And remember that we have a new grievance form that is online, that's available for individuals, and we encourage them to follow those procedures for grievances. So with that, I believe we have Ms. Toni Douglas, who has registered for public comment.
Yes, she was down there on the bottom.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, now we can.
Great, great. Thank you, Marilyn. I appreciate that. I would just like to make a quick, I would like to encourage the board, especially new members, to know what is going on. I would also like to make sure that you have read and have received copies of all documentations and anything pending with the college. And encourage you to look into those matters as elected officials, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Toni.
All right. And, and that concludes your comment, Toni?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, president's report.
Yes, several points to mention. First is to highlight some student success, and I still owe the best thunder here, let your fin shot on the information on this, but Garden City Community College has selected two student recipients who will be honored by five-day cap, both the Academic All-Americans, Deborah Medina Escalera, who is from Garden City, and Lauren Jones, who is from Oregon, and Sabeth, I know will have a little bit more information in her reports as far as a virtual reception that will be occurring this year. Several highlights on athletics, I just wanted to provide some summary on track and field. Currently, our men's indoor track team is ranked sixteenth in the nation, and the women are ranked eighteenth. We have had one woman, Deonna Rowmore, who has qualified for nationals so far, set a new school record in fifty-five-inch hurdles at the last event. Baseball is competing, currently two and one on the season. Basketball is, both men's and women's are off to a great start. Women basketball is sitting at three and one right now. Men's basketball at two and two. And our volleyball team is off to one of their best starts in several seasons, currently sitting at seven and six. Cory Garrett is currently sitting second in the nation, and Diggs. And then also freshman setter Ricky Vargas has been nominated as conference player, equal to three in the conference. So volleyball team is off to a great start, three and O in the conference, and actually, Luke Hutchinson for the first time in twenty years, so great, great work there on the athletic front. Couple things, just as reminders there within athletics, the conference did last week, it has improved up to twenty-five percent of capacity for gymnasiums to be able to allow spectators. That, that accounts for three hundred and eighty-five spectators on ConStogli Arena, and so we are working through the specifics, and our first game with spectators will actually be this Thursday, the ballgame. We're reserving a hundred and fifty tickets for students to be able to come and join the thirty-five for spectators. The online ticketing system.
Dr. Ruda. Masks required, obviously entered, but also while at the game? Or just social distancing?
Both. Oh, yes. Masks will be required, and then we also have designated, there will be rows in between where spectators can sit, so we already have that designated where individuals can sit and keep a row in between. Also will not be concessions this year for conference guidelines as well. So hydrate, hydrate.
Brian, there also be temperature screenings?
Yes. The beauty of it is, there is, if you do get a ticket, we have made the decision to go ahead and keep tickets at no cost this year. If you're able to get online there, then we don't want to charge you full tickets for admission.
Is that every, every game?
Every game.
Like, every game you have to, okay?
Yeah.
All right, and as long as we're on this subject, I'm gonna ask the rest of my questions, some ownership linkage. Outdoor venues.
Currently, outdoor venues are at twenty-five percent capacity as well. Conference will be meeting on March first to reassess, determine if we can change, increase, decrease, or just keep it at forty-five percent. At this current, at the same pressure.
And so the way to get a ticket, people have to have a ticket to get in.
Correct.
Cannot buy it at the door.
Correct.
Okay.
I did have a question today, and I could not find anything on volleyball. I was able to get my tickets for basketball, but there was nothing available for volleyball, and I had a community member ask me today.
Those tickets will be good for volleyball.
The basketball will be good for volleyball?
I think it's listed on there, too.
I think so.
An email that was sent out, I believe, that said.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Ticket, so those say basketball.
Yeah. Okay. I'll make a call tomorrow.
And while we're on it, especially for the, maybe not so much for the students, because they're aware of it and certainly, but for the public, enforcement of masks, asking to leave, hopefully not an issue.
This past weekend with basketball games, we didn't allow our students to come to the first game. Frankly, we're just going, it's just possible.
Okay.
Lock the mask, there's both the mask.
I think one of the best things you can do.
I'm trying to remove it, but you're keeping it for watching.
Okay.
And all of the athletics are still gonna be televised or streamed?
Correct. For free. Several schools are charging, they're online. You and.
Okay.
And if there are any other questions that come up, don't hesitate to order it, so Ashley, the athletic office itself, happy to answer you. Just a couple of last reminders, your updates are done as well. So Garden City Community College was selected to participate in Tyson's upward pathways. We were one of only ten community colleges nationwide selected to participate with Tyson Foods. This is an initiative that takes Tyson employees with hands-on, job-specific training, and we will work with them on gaining and improving skills within industrial machine mechanic. The college did receive a ten thousand dollar grant from Tyson, as well as an additional four thousand dollar grant from the board of regents to be able to work with this area, but credit to Hector, the old Bernie center on the work that they've done to really continue building bridges with Tyson as a new department. And I did want to highlight our Excel and CPE funding, which is the technical education funding that each community college and tech school in Kansas receives for students who take dual-credit classes in the pre-pathways. Back in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, Garden City Community College had received ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars for the credits earned from students in dual-credit. As of this, this fall, we have been able to increase through partnerships with K-12 institutions to over two hundred and six thousand. Additionally, we did have, you know, last year with COVID had hit, there was a stall at the state level as far as paying last spring's payments, so we were an institution that was underpaid based upon the credit allowance we had from last spring. And the state will be paying those now in arrears, so we will collect an additional hundred and ten thousand that we should have received last spring with our February payments there as well. So a lot of great work there by Mark and Chuck and Phil and faculty, and we also plan to be adding automotive and industrial maintenance as well as increasing all the part of the office next year. And then just the last point that I would bring up, this last week, we've been working through student government and, you know, with IT and others to be able to put into place a twenty-four-seven computer lab for students. Been talking to students here for the last semester or so about the need for students to have access to computers after hours. Last week, we did open up our after-hours lab in the academic building, so students will now have access to a computer lab from three PM in the afternoon, three-seventy in Monday and Friday, and then twenty-four hours later, Saturday and Sunday. So it's, it's open for students to be able to utilize and access as they move through their. So I have.
Questions for Dr. Ruda? Comments? Okay. A report from Sydney Sessman. She's the director of admissions.
Yes, Sydney is, I'm gonna turn it over to her, but I wanted to have her, she came in last week and updated the cabinet on a new admissions online application that we've implemented over the course, not we, her, her team, and I team. Not gonna take credit for anything, but she has done a tremendous job in leading this effort, and I really thought it was important through this area for the board to be able to see some of the technological advances that we're making for students to be able to increase access to Garden City. Sydney?
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so first I'll walk you guys through the handout I made for you, just kind of about what's been going on with it, and then I'll show you guys an actual application from the student side, and then what we see processing it on our side in the admissions office. So I'll preface this by saying this was a pretty big deal for us. Prior to this, we were manually processing every single application we were receiving, and I timed myself a few times, and it took about six minutes to process an application and get everything entered. So in days, we had like forty application comes in, come in, and you times that by six minutes, we were spending a large amount of our time just entering applications instead of actively recruiting, so this has been really nice to have this new system. Let me share my screen here. Okay. Um, so just a couple of dates, so you kind of know where we're at with it. Our application online in the system went live January fifth, and then as of January eleventh, we're no longer accepting the paper applications and having everybody go through this online application. The admissions office staff, we did get laptops through Leslie to have in our office, so if students walk in and need help or assistance or don't have a smartphone or don't want to fill out the application on our phone, they can sit down with us and fill out the application in our office with us. February, February first, we had another meeting with the Lucian, and we got set up with texting through Twilio. And so now we're able to send text to students through this application. We're just set up now to send one-off text, which means we have to go to each individual student, and then we can type out the text that we want to send. That's with the long code. We're waiting to get what's called a short code through Twilio so that we can actually build the texting communications into a communication plan where they just go out automatically based on the criteria, and we're hoping to have the short code and the communication plans implemented by February nineteenth. So we're almost done with all of that. The next session, section, this is the recruitment funnel as it was this afternoon today. So I can see this live at any time on our dashboard. So our prospects and inquiries are essentially the same because we don't purchase student names from ACT or anything like that, so our students basically start at the inquiry stage, which means they're sending us their ACT scores, they're sending us their FAFSA, or they filled out a prospect card or done a campus visit, and that's how we're requiring their information. So as of today, we had a hundred and fifty-four inquiries of these, a hundred and fifty-four, a hundred and eight started an application of that hundred and eight, ninety-one submitted and completed their application. The difference between the submitted stage of ninety-one and the completed stage of thirty-one, we are requiring the TB form to fill, be filled out, or all of the international documents to be submitted before their move from submitted to complete. At the point of which they're completed and admitted, they're sent to colleague. So these stages up here, they don't exist in our system yet with an ID number. The point of admittance is when they get assigned an ID number. And then confirmed and enrolled, we have twenty-seven, so from top to bottom, we're looking at a conversion rate of seventeen point five percent. I know last week, Dr. Ruda asked me what a good conversion rate is. I've been researching it, but haven't really found any good articles or anything yet on it, but I am looking at that. One article I was reading today did talk about colleges trying to get to twelve percent, so based off of that article, we're sitting pretty well right now.
What is the definition of a conversion rate?
Um, so that is a percentage, so that is twenty-seven, the enrolled students divided by the hundred and fifty-four inquiry students, so when students are entering our tunnel, our funnel at the top, that's the percentage at which we're able to convert inquiries to enrolled students.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Um, so upcoming, what we have planned in the future but haven't quite implemented yet, all campus visits will be scheduled on the events page of eRecruit. Students will also register for their enrollment days on the event section. We are working with Tech, and we met with Fine Arts on Friday, and the ESL, and we are having program-specific emails go out automatically upon receiving a student's information. And then we also will be doing program-specific text messages when we get the short code to set up the text communication plans. And then we are implementing a monthly communication plan that will happen from October to April, so when students are applying during October for Kansas Supply Month, and then they can enroll till. And then they can't enroll till April. Our communication plans from October to April will just be like fun reminders or things students need to get done to just remind them that. Garden's here. We haven't forgot about you, and if you need anything, we're here, and these are things that they should be getting done throughout there. Currently, the active communicate, the active communication plans we have going. When a student fills out the inquiry form, or we get their information through FAFSA or ACT SAT. They get an email thanking them for their interest in GCCC, and it encourages them to submit an application. So we have a communication plan. That has like an email, and then seven days later, a mailing, and then seven days later, another email. That's the goal, is to get students to submit an application. Then at the point an application is started, they get email reminders to finish their application. Once an application is submitted, they get an email thanking them for their application and refers them to the steps to enrollment. Things like doing their FAFSA, housing application, scholarships, things like that. International students also receive an email. Going through everything that's required of international students, which is nice because prior I had to manually send. Every single international applicant an email, walking them through the steps. For international admission, and there's about 12 supplemental items that. International students are required to submit. If students have submitted their application but haven't gotten in their TB form or their international supplemental items. They get three separate emails seven days apart saying, hey, thanks for submitting your application. Just a reminder, you need to submit this item to complete. Your admission. Once we've received the TB form or any other supplemental items, we mark it complete, and they get an email congratulating them, and they retrieve their acceptance letter directly on their dashboard as a PDF. And also get their acceptance letter in the mail with their acceptance packet. And then, as I mentioned, we have department-specific emails that we're working with the. Program directors on what they kind of want to go up to students. So do you guys have any questions about this, or I can go on and show you the actual application?
Sydney, you said that. Timing-wise, about six minutes when you had to manually enter, this pretty much eliminates that completely. I mean, this is all automation?
Yeah, so the student fills out their application all online, and then when we hit application mark complete. It automatically sends all of their information into colleague and auto fills in all the fields we were manually entering.
Good job.
Thanks. So here's the application. So this is, I'm showing you in our test environment, so I don't actually create the student in actual colleague. But this is the front page that students will see when they come to our application. I will show you. We created. A landing page on our website that kind of walks students through. Directions and information about it, and so they have two options here. If they're brand new, they click here to apply, and if. They've already started an application or just need to log in, they click here. So this is anywhere on our website, you click Apply Now. This is the page you're taken to. And then when they click to apply, they can either sign into their account that already exists, or they can create a new. Account, and so this would be the inquiry stage. This is the information we're gathering at the very top of the funnel. So name, email, contact information. Their high school, if they're interested in any athletics or activities. Their academic program and their entry term. And what type of student they are, if they're a first-time freshman returning, special or transfer, and we kind of walk them through the definitions of those here. Because that was one of our bigger questions on our prior application. I already have an account created here, so I'll go ahead and sign in. So this is the student dashboard, and so this is where events where they can schedule campus visits or enrollment days. We have an enrollment day active in the test environment right now, so there'll just be a whole list of every event that's available for students to sign up for. So if they need to create a new application. They click here. And then since I've already completed this application, I'll start a new opportunity. So the entry term, we only have one academic level of undergraduate. And then program. Okay, so then here's our full application, and it auto fills in information that they already filled out on that inquiry, create account page. And so some of this is optional without the red stars. And so all this, all this page automatically fills in unless they have a current address that's not their permanent address. And this is where we gather. Citizenship, citizenship status. This information is all optional. But all of this information pulls into colleague. And so then. We have, we worked on a rather large list of like 8,000 schools that exist in colleague already. And had to get them to match up with the right code so that when a student searches their high school, it automatically populates down here, and they can select the school they attended. If it's not there. It asks them to enter, manually enter, type out their school name. Same if they have college credit, they can say they've attended, if they've been academically dismissed or not, and then add their college. Here they can add any activities. That we have on campus. So for example, we met with Fine Arts on Friday, and we're sending a list to them every two weeks of students that say they're interested in choir and band. And orchestra and art. So they can be contacting the students also directly from their department. Emergency contact doesn't populate because we haven't asked that before now. And then here we just have them certify that their information is correct, that their application may not be altered after this point. And that all official transcripts will be required for financial aid eligibility. And then they just type their signature and submit application. And so now this is what the student sees. They see this application here that it's submitted, and then they can click View. To view their supplemental items. So here, ACT and SAT scores are optional. Official high school transcript is optional, but the TB questionnaire form is required. Because the student did not indicate that they were fully online. If they are a fully online student, then they don't even see the TB questionnaire here. So then on our side in the admissions office. Here's kind of our home dashboard. And then. Here we can see, here's the application I submitted, application submitted last 24 hours. So up here, we see where they're at in the funnel stage. Here's their supplemental item, so if this student sends or uploads their supplemental item, we just mark it received. And then at this point, the student is good to go ahead and be moved to colleague. So we mark them complete. And then we add a application decision history. Of applied, which tells the system to send the student to colleague and give them their acceptance letter. So then now you can see up here, this student has an ID number. Here are the emails that have gone out to the student.
Does this connect with the Buster email?
It, all, everything out of this system goes to the email that they applied with, so their personal email. Sorry, go ahead. So here, the student got an email that says their application is completed, visit the enrollment checklist. And they should be able to access their acceptance letter within 48 hours. And then we did, were able to mark them applied right away. And. They received. This welcome to GCCC email that they can go to their account, look at my applications, and click on View under Action and View Decision History, so.
Okay, Sydney, I like the, the program. I think you guys have thought about everything. So.
Yeah, if there's anything else you guys want to see, I can show you. Real quick, here's the, now it says you're accepted right here, and they can view and download their acceptance letter right away, and they don't have to wait for it through the mail.
Right.
No, truly transforms the process and moves from manual to automated, which is tremendous.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys have any questions or anything, just reach out and we can let you know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, real quick, I'd like just to give a shout out to Sydney and all the hours that her and her staff put in, and I'll tell you just real quick. I was, I've been meeting with the elusive consultant, you know, about once every three weeks, and they said, what Cindy and her staff were doing. As far as timelines, they were meeting them faster than a lot of other institutions that they worked with. So they were really appreciative of the timelines and the details, so. A lot of, with a lot of hours for this.
Good job.
You know, have a good evening.
Thanks, Sydney. Thanks, Colin. Okay. Item D, incidental information. Do you guys have any comments or questions? I had a question on page 74. The question, the comment under the FAFSA numbers. Department of Education verification, the comment says significantly higher numbers selected compared to last year. Not so good news for students.
That means you have to run through a bunch of hooks. They didn't give the information, or something wasn't, didn't fit the jive when the students were filling it out.
Okay.
Yeah. That's exactly right. Just some things were left off and not as detailed as what they needed, so that caused some higher numbers.
Okay. Any other? Comments? Okay. Item E, report from City County Economic Development. David?
Well, we received an attaboy from Chairman Tom Walker for the work. College does working with the school districts. And Shannon Dick puts together a lot of numbers and says the interview with Chuck Fife, they're on social media, has been most watched video since it aired, so.
There you go. And any other developments that you can report? Anything in the works?
I mean, we have several projects that they've been in contact with, but nothing really. Coming down the pipe.
Great. Report from KACC.
This will be very brief. Next month will be more because we would have had a meeting on March 6th. Hopefully by March 2022, we'll be able to meet. In Topeka for the Phi Theta Kappa and all that that we were used to up until this year. The Phi Theta Kappa recognition, as Ryan said, is. Is on Zoom. The college is planning, Jody's working on it, I think, the watch party. It's March 3rd at noon. And you'll get more details on it as, as they're worked out. So if you want, can, can they access it by Zoom if they're at home? Okay. We'll get that information to you. Then, that's. That's the Phi Theta Kappa, and then our next meeting is March 6th, which is a Saturday at 8 o'clock in the morning. From, from my basement, no. It seems, it seems like every time they have them, it's the day my cleaning lady comes, and so I go to the basement. Any other questions? As, as we get information on, as Marilyn requested last meeting. Anytime we get any information of all of them from the legislature or. Anything that's. For change to the college at all, we will, that goes through this, I'll make sure that Ryan and Jody get the information and can get it out to you all.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you representing us. Item H, report from Faculty Senate. For left. Oh, I skipped one, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, I skipped one. SGA. My apologies.
That's okay. Can you guys hear me okay?
There you are, yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm at the Y, so if there's background noise. Okay, so last time we talked, we had, I had two events that just passed. We had Chocolate Cake Day. And the cafeteria made three cakes for us, and they were all good, and so we just passed them out to students, and everybody enjoyed that. For like COVID and everything, we just cut it and then put it into a styrofoam and then handed it in for it to go, and then. This, the 4th and 5th of February, we made cards for soldiers. And we ended with 54 cards. Made for them, so we are going to send them off. And then this coming Friday, the 12th, we are going to do a Make It Take It Valentine's, and we're going to have like candy and. Make candy roses to pass out to the students, and then they can come make a card for their Valentine. Or for anyone that they want to, and then PTK is going to make cards for nursing homes, so they're going to have students make cards and then send it to the nursing homes. Halo is selling singing Valentines, and they are selling candy arrangements as well. And then the 22nd of February, we are trying to have the dog run again. I called Nikki today from the Humane Society, and she said. That she has to talk to corporate, and then she will get back to me, so hopefully we can do it this semester. And then the 26th of February, we plan on playing the movie called The 13th. And for Black History Month, it's a documentary about how. Just some facts about the history, so. And that is all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Taryn, this is Marilyn. Is there any plan for the river cleanup like two years ago?
Yeah. We've talked about it, we brought up the idea, but we haven't made fully plans for that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Taryn? Thank you for your leadership.
Have a good night.
Thanks, bye bye. All right, now Faculty Senate report.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Hi, hope, um, I hope everybody's doing well. Uh, mine should be a quick report as well. We. Faculty Senate met about, um, a week ago, and we should be meeting again this Friday. We're working on a couple of things. One of the big ones is we are trying to figure out how to rethink our learning communities. Our learning community is something that Faculty Senate puts together, and it, it's so that we can try and use. The employees of the college to kind of help each other with professional development, so we tend to have faculty who go out. To conferences, come back and present for, um, the faculty here at GCCC or, and everybody's invited, not just faculty, we also have had. Presentations from staff members, and so really is every employee is invited to both present as well as attend. However, uh, because of COVID, uh, we haven't been able to host our learning communities so well. And even right before COVID, we were having a kind of issues with attendance because. Just everybody's schedule is so packed, so it's difficult to get people to actually come to learning communities. We've had some really great presentations with. Low attendance because of just times, uh, and scheduling, so we're kind of trying to rethink that and reorganize that. Gabe and John Dear, our Vice President of Faculty Senate, is kind of thinking outside the box, which is really great, and he has. Moved the learning communities more of a, to an online format, and so he's asking presenters to. Record a video, and then we're gonna house those videos hopefully in the YouTube website, another YouTube website, on our YouTube. Page for the college so that everybody in the college has access to that video. So far, we only have one. We are working with. GC3 Media to make those recording, those recordings, and our first presenter is. A member of Faculty Senate, it is Courtney Morrison, and she, or Morris, sorry, and she is presenting on the Near Pod, Near Pod. Application to, um, help with interactive online lectures, and so it's a really good presentation. And they recorded it, I believe, two weeks ago. They are editing it this week, and hopefully we can post it soon. And Gabe is looking for new people to present, so we can have as many, uh, videos as possible by the end of the year. And so that was the big one, and then another thing that we're kind of thinking about is the awards. We usually have the Outstanding Rookie Award, the Outstanding Faculty Award. Unfortunately, last year, because of the pandemic, we just went online so quickly that we had no way of. Really doing awards, so we haven't given awards for the winners from last year. Um, and we've decided to just put them with this year, so we're gonna ask for nominations and. Get new nominees and new winners this year, and we'll just give out, uh, two sets of awards because of the times we're living in. And so those are really the two big things that we're working on right now.
Great, um, questions for Perla, your comments. We appreciate you guys. Thank you for working so hard.
Thank you.
Okay. Guys doing okay? Item I accreditation update, update.
Yeah, so leading into the HLC visit we have upcoming in November twenty-two. Want to just provide a monthly update, just a little snippet there of things that. We're working on, just updates for the board there on timelines and things, so that's what we want to start with there tonight, Mark. Just kind of a short overview there of what our timelines and our processes will look like leading into the November twenty-two visit. Mark?
Are you able to see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So this will be, uh, quick and painless, I promise. Dr. Ruda had mentioned, uh, the goal of just providing short informational updates regarding our accreditation process. The goal here is to really let you know what we're doing on campus in order to make sure that we're successful. Um, and also just let you know or keep you updated about the Higher Learning Commission and the accreditation process generally. So, um, it used to be that, that colleges went on a ten-year cycle for accreditation. HLC doesn't do that anymore, so. Here we are, we are on our four-year comprehensive evaluation. It's our mid-cycle check-in, and there are several components to that. One of them. Is the assurance argument. If I look at the right spot in my notes, that would help. Uh, one of them is the assurance argument. It's the largest portion of it. It's the written portion. Um, and we will start working on that this semester and carry that through to November of two thousand twenty-two. In fall of twenty-two, we will, um, with HLC administer a student opinion survey, and then. Um, in November, November seventh and eighth of twenty-two, there will be an on-campus site visit, so the four-year comprehensive evaluation. Has most of the, um, elements of a ten-year review. Um, it's only missing the federal compliance piece. So because the assurance argument is the most intensive, largest portion of this, I want to just break this out and how we're gonna work through this. I've worked with Cabinet and also Dr. Ruda individually to kind of make sure we're all on the same page about how we're gonna move forward. We're gonna take a team-based writing approach. There are five criterion for, um, accreditation. We will have five teams, uh, probably each with a co-chair, and their job will really be to. Assemble the first draft of the assurance argument, assemble their component of it for that first draft. One thing to note is, because the institution is in a, is in a good place, like with things like assessment. We're in a good, a good place. This. Four-year, um, comprehensive evaluation is more about demonstrating that we have continued our quality improvement processes. We don't have to really invent a ton of new things and update a ton of processes and invent a whole new set of processes. It's really about maintaining. So our assurance argument, I think, will be more of a revision. Of our previous argument and less of a total overhaul that we've seen at the institution in the past. So several things that we'll do, um, we're gonna, uh, assemble these teams and ask them to, to do a process of just reviewing institutional practice. So there are ma, really four major pieces of work that they will have a year to complete, and one of them is. What worked in the past in our, a previous assurance argument, what was successful? In our, uh, notes from the Institutional Action Council, what did they highlight as being essential for? Having us accredited not on probation, and so just reviewing that information. The HLC criteria have changed, and so we will also ask each one of those writing teams to review. The updated criteria. Uh, they did not change substantially, but there, there is some change and some, some revision in there, and so we'll need to make sure that whatever argument we're writing. Aligns to that change. And based on the first two things, where do we need to update our argument? Where do we need to add to? Where do we need to change examples? And where do we need to beef up any institutional processes? So this one is really about where are there gaps in our argument? That we need to deal with, um, and, and make sure that we have evidence for in two thousand twenty-two. And then the final piece of work here is, uh, is about the evidence file that goes along with the assurance argument. It's like reading an online news article, the assurance argument. It's forty thousand words, and there are lots of links to cold hard documentation. So this evidence might be, um, policies, meeting minutes, um, the, the audit, uh, would be another piece of evidence. So just compiling all that evidence so it can be uploaded into that, um, assurance argument in the evidence file. The last thing I'll go over really quickly here is just a timeline, so starting in spring of twenty-one. We will assign the writing teams, and then we'll do a training on that institutional practice review and going over those four elements. And making sure those writing teams are really set up to do that review over the next year. That will continue through summer and fall, and then about a year from now in spring of twenty-two. Around January, we will ask the writing teams to submit their drafts to President's Cabinet. We will then go about the work of reviewing and revising those drafts, making sure that we have all the evidence compiled. And then we'll do other sorts of institutional preparation, things like peer reviews, um, a mock visit, those types of conversations to get everyone prepared. Um, and then that will also continue into summer, and then in fall, we will review and revise the drafts one last time. We will administer the student survey October tenth. Our assurance argument is locked. We cannot make changes after that date. And so we'll have a little bit of time to then prepare for, um, the physical on-campus site visit. That is a very quick, I feel like I, I talked very quickly. I'm happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that you all may have. About information shared.
Comments, questions? Okay, well, Mark, I have. From the board's perspective, we need to be involved in, in the process somewhere in there. Can you, when will that happen, or, and can we do sooner rather than later?
I think, Dr. Ruda, you might be the one to address this.
Yeah, you're saying as far as being involved on the, on the writing aspect then, or just being brought up to speed on the changes within the criteria and.
Just so that we have knowledge of. Yeah, so we can, when we get asked the questions, what do we do?
Absolutely, yeah.
We can, we feel like we're answering right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, you know, I, I see it really as, it's two different things. I mean, I think one is being able to send, uh, the writing teams and. You know, we can definitely involve the board on the writing teams there, the other aspect that has crossed my mind is just being able to send the drafts for review and feedback. Or questions that the board may have there from what, uh, has been drafted on each of the criterion. But the other piece that, that Mark had mentioned, it's gonna be unique, and it's gonna be different this time they're leading into it, there is being able to do. A mock visit, uh, we have several individuals that we, you know, that we will. Break the campus and just kind of give us a, a dry run, uh, per se there before we, and, uh, so the board will definitely be involved in that aspect of it.
From the last visits, do you guys remember specific things about that the board needed? To be involved in or polished in or. I just, I, I'm, I know the interview was, was the biggest part.
Some of it is, is language or two, and I, I think part of it was. You know, boards, boards understanding of essential skills and how that goes into the assessment process and things, and. So I, you know, I think that, I mean, as Mark and I talked there, and part of it is, we can do it through these monthly meetings, and we can do it. More frequently for pushing out other information there as well, but. I think a lot of it is getting familiar with terminology, because it's, it's different terminology. Than what, you know, we used last time. But I think a lot of it is, is really just being able to stay engaged with the board, keep it updated, and, uh, you know, on what the. Preparation and, and the things look like, so that's why we started a year and a half in advance to be able to have. Some of those conversations versus waiting until such a good time and trying to.
Right.
Really drill in some of that, uh, in a short amount of time, so.
Yeah, I have to think about it.
I would.
As far as, like, what we. So much of it was based on deficiencies and trying to, you know, talk through those. I mean, that was, that was, but. Trying to think back when the initials came is, yeah.
May, maybe it'd be even as simple as keeping a journal of. The specific things we talk about for HLC at the board.
Right.
And adding to it each month, and. So we have something to refer to. What do you guys think?
Can't hurt. Sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
The other thing that I would add, and I think Dr. Ruda is a hundred percent on track in terms of. Uh, things like a mock visit, having, having sessions where, and it can be more than one also, where the board is. Given a time to kind of go through sample questions and, and get the terminology and all of that down. I think the other thing that's really key, and, and you all have done a tremendous job over the, the. You know, one to two years that I've been here, of really doing training to, to fully understand and invest yourselves in your own role in the institution. And I think that that's an essential element of it. And we can certainly dive more into, um, you know, Criterion Five, which, which gets into institutional governance and those sorts of things. But, but th, those are my thoughts, um, in line with, with things that you've already expressed, and we certainly want, um, a successful accreditation visit. Um, and, and you're an integral part of that.
Let me, let me listen. By asking this here, I mean, would it be helpful to be able to put together a. A binder, uh, that we could keep a label there just by date and says, here's what was, here's what was discussed at. February eight, board meeting, next month or so. Then have that there for each of you. There's a reference board. If you want to make notes, we can keep binders in the office and bring them out at each board meeting, but then there's a. A historical binder that you have there that shows what it is, you know, if you ever want to take it on the church too, but. Would that be helpful?
What do you think?
I believe it would, especially if there was new ones.
Yeah. Me too. Okay, let's do it.
We'll work on that.
Okay. Sorry, Jody, that's a word. It's okay. Okay. Thank you, Mark.
You're very welcome.
We look forward to many more meetings with you.
Thanks.
All right, it is eight thirty. Are you guys, we.
Pushed through.
Pushed through, we, okay, we are looking at item J, strategic planning discussion. These, and let Dr. Ruda, oh, and Derek is here too, uh, talk about our options. So, correct me if I'm wrong, our intention is to have a good discussion about these options that. Are presented tonight, and are, at the end of the discussion, our hope is that we can make a recommendation. To administration to present a, um. A final. Decision to be voted on at the March board meeting.
Correct.
Okay. So with that, I'll let you take it over.
All right. Appreciate the chance to, to visit there. What we, what we've presented and came up there with you at, at each of your seats here are really three different options. And these three options really kind of entail. Discussions that administration has had there on. What puts us on the best path forward for master's facilities planning, addressing deferred maintenance and capital needs, uh, on campus, so. Through that, um, you know, we've really studied and taken a look at, at overall debt service, some of that which you saw tonight there in the audit. Some of that is going to be brought into, uh, conversations there for various options, so. Just to kind of go through and, and provide a high level there, we have identified. Roughly around three point one, just, just under three point one million dollars worth of. Deferred maintenance capital in the projects that are all coming through our master's facilities planning, uh, that has been culmination of. Studies on campus, conversations with stakeholders, uh, and projects that need to be done there just for infrastructure-wise of securing campus. So that is what is presented on the screen, uh, and also in front of you there as far as the. The culmination of the projects that we'll be presenting to you tonight, but with that, we've also came up with three different options. So the first option that we will present there is. To take a look at the Wagner apartments that we, uh, had purchased back in two thousand seventeen. Option one would entail retaining all of the Wagner apartments, uh, keeping the debt service, which is currently around. Three hundred and forty thousand on, uh, the second half of the apartments that were purchased in two thousand seventeen. three hundred and forty thousand on, uh, the second half of the apartments that were purchased in two thousand seventeen. What we would be doing if we do retain those then would be asking to bring back refinancing options to the board in March uh, that we would have a net savings projected of around sixty three thousand dollars, uh, for the debt that would retire in twenty twenty six. With that, um, by retaining the Wagner apartments and maintaining that debt, we would then also be requesting tonight their direction from the board to go forward with bringing back financing, uh, options on these projects, uh, that would infer an additional debt service of two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, to be able to address these infrastructure needs. Last year, we did have debt service that we retired, um, from a project of around four hundred thousand, so uh, we we do have savings there to be able to account for that, so. Option one, uh, is is looking at retaining our current debt structure, uh, but also bringing on an additional debt service on these projects of two hundred and fifty thousand dollar Option two would be, the administration, we came up with some options there to where we would sell half of the Wagner apartments, uh, that were purchased in two thousand seventeen, which in in turn would free up three hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of debt service. And with that, uh, would ask the board for direction to bring back, uh, financing for these projects for the debt service of two hundred and fifty thousand, so essentially just trading out, uh, the debt service, uh, with option two. Option three, uh, is probably the least favorable, uh, but it is an option to where we would fund, uh, the three point one million dollars worth of projects strictly out of capital outlets, so this would mean administratively that we would prioritize the list of projects. Our capital outlay budget is annually around five hundred thousand. So roughly, we would be looking at about a six to ten year timeframe to be able to complete, uh, the capital projects that we presented to you tonight. So before, you know, before we go into talking through the projects and and we'll have Derek available to answer any questions on the projects there as well, um, but again, these are these are items that, uh, we've spent a considerable amount of time, uh, working through there with the master's facilities plan. It addresses, uh, HVAC, it addresses roofs, it addresses transportation, it addresses accessibility, campus safety, as well as students. Uh, so wanted to be able to have Derek kind of walk through or answer any questions, but then also, uh, Carla be available to answer questions, uh, relative to considerations that we've looked at uh, for refinancing the apartments for cost savings, as well as, uh, the debt service on the C O P projects there then as well, that we would ask, we're a foundation for the board to bring back in March.
So I can go through the projects with you guys, um, so a lot of these projects have been on master's facility plans, um, all of them we've had that with numerous consultants, engineers, architects over the years and kind of developed this list that you see in front of you. Uh, the chiller, uh, right now, we have one chiller servicing the cooling unit on campus. And what this would do is it would add redundancy and it would create, uh, well, the chiller we have there now about fifteen years, fifteen years old, so their life expectancy is around there, fifteen to twenty years, and we add a second chiller, we could prolong the life expectancy of both chillers. So, uh, if one were to go down, still have the one capable of running the entire loop. Um, a new bus, you know, we have wear and tear on the buses every year, uh, we have these NCI buses and the NCI buses are great. The problem with that is we're having a hard time finding people to work on them, so we'd like to go back and purchase at least one, uh, freightliner bus uh, to transport our team, we like fifty one passenger. And we possibly might even go used and get a one use or two used, a fifty one passenger and a possible thirty eight passenger, but that will depend on what's the availability out in the market. Um, campus lighting will improve our security system on campus, um, it's similar to the ones you see on the quad. Uh, so it's going to add that kind of lighting throughout campus and all the dark areas that we may have. Uh, boiler is the same thing, we have two boilers servicing the entire campus. Uh, we add a third, it creates, you know, redundancy and plus life expectancy for all three boilers. Uh, dishwasher system sorely needed in, uh, cafeteria, and this is something we've had on our master's facility plan for the last five years. Uh, we just haven't been able to find the funding for it. Uh, new transportation building and this one's, um, to protect our fleet in our buses, and we have a million dollars in assets just sitting out there in the weather. And, uh, it just deteriorates over time and this will help us save that and it's thus allow us to work on them more freely in inside. Uh, the tunnel cap system is a safety issue, we'd like to, we've done two phases so far, this one will take care of the main quad. And so, uh, that's a priority for us and we put it off al- already a year, so we definitely need to get that taken care of. And same with the hydraulic water piping, it's existing, uh, on the loop system. Uh, it's, you know, it has leaks and we've been able to patch it so far, but it it's in dire need of replacement. Uh, Bronk Buster street board replacement, uh, we've gone through those and noticed, you know, some issues that they've had along the way, they need, they're on our schedule to be replaced. And then the west hall upgrade, uh, we haven't really touched west hall much cosmetically, but the showers need replaced and then the water heater systems both need to be replaced. And the rest also, uh, do you guys have any questions, any of those projects?
These are the projects that we approved last year before COVID.
Not, not in its entirety, there have been a few projects that, uh, the cooling towers have been installed this last week. Ones that we brought forward as part of the C O P last year, but we've been able to find other, other funding for those. And then also our network switch, uh, was an item that we had on on the list last year as well, we've been able to find funding for that.
And the access control, as you guys have noticed, that's been installed right now.
I have a couple of questions, the, uh, if I'm looking at it correctly, if we look at refinancing the apartments, that does not change the payoff date, right?
Does not change.
On any, any situation, okay. Um, and then it, so the C O P would basically be the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar debt service that we take on, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, now that's for all these projects, but we also have a five hundred thousand dollar annual budget for capital outlay, do we have that earmarked, I mean, I I understand that comes up every year, but do we have uh, it always seems like we have to use it and and find things to use, but um, how does that play into it, would we be, I mean, is that an option of looking at reducing down maybe the C O P and and I'm not saying to use, again, like the capital outlay um, exclusively because we understand that's going to take six to ten years to make these projects work, but you, and I, and I realize, I don't know the timeline of getting all this done, certainly probably not within a year, but um, have we looked at maybe using some of that capital outlay or are we strictly keeping that capital outlay for something other pressing?
So we definitely looked at it, you know, these are big projects that we've kind of put in the C O P. And I've kind of earmarked the capital outlay, if we were to do that, uh, and spend capital outlay funds just on these projects, it would take us six, uh, six to ten years at the minimum. Um, what that does, it takes away from the deferred maintenance list that's on the master's facilities plan, like you have your, your, you know, windows, your H P I, HVAC upgrades and your domestic piping, your So those projects wouldn't be getting done because we'd be focusing more on these, uh, urgent, more urgent items.
No, and I certainly understand that and I'm not necessarily saying, I I understand that the, using only capital outlay would be would be difficult, but what I'm saying is, is have we looked at maybe the possibility of fifty thousand out of capital outlay for the next couple of years or a hundred thousand out of capital outlay, I mean, any bit to take it off of the C O P, I I realize the bulk of it has to come from C O P to be able to get the jobs done. I'm just also, I mean, and and maybe it doesn't do that much of a difference, but
No, it, uh, I mean, so I would say two things and and one, and Carla probably speaks to this better there as far as on the interest rates. You know, but the interest rates here as far as borrowing right now are very favorable, uh, the other side there, I mean, yes, we have looked at what it is we might be able to do at a capital outlay, um. The other side of that there is, I mean, Derek can link to this a little bit. We have roughly two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars a year that we're allocating towards additional projects and and things that need to be done, additional infrastructure wise, uh, on top of these projects that are being presented to you, so you know, out of, out of what it is that we bring in for capital outlay that each year on about five hundred thousand, uh, we have designated between two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand for additional upgrades this year and and items.
And to kind of piggyback off of that, uh, there's some stipulations about using capital outlay funds, so like for the, for example, the tunnel cap and hydraulic water pipe, we wouldn't be able to use, uh, capital outlay for the bus, you want to go and use capital?
Carla, do you want to mention anything there as far as information you have there on on financing or interest?
Sure, I'd be glad to, um, so, um, I have reached out to John Haas with Ransom um, with which we have worked with before, or he, we worked with him last year as we were preparing, um, for this financing and so he's ransom plenary numbers. Um, so we are going to start the amortization schedule with an interest rate of point two five percent. And at the end of fifteen years
Two five.
Point two five percent, yes. Point two five percent, that's like, they're almost paying us to borrow money. And then at the end of fifteen years, it's one point five five percent. So when we, when I reached out to him with our list of projects and refinancing just one portion of the Bronk Buster Suites, which is what we did last year because the interest rates did not, were not favorable to refinance the whole Bronk Buster Suites. Um, now I'm reaching out to him to say, well, if it is the desire, if if the board wants to keep all of the Bronk Buster Suites, let's look at refinancing all of them because the first purchase of the Bronk Buster Suites, the interest rate was two point two eight. So yes, there is cost to refinance, but that's two point, that's two points of savings. So, um, you know, depending on, you know, the pleasure of the board, I think that we have an opportunity to, you know, save to to help our debt service in that area, which ultimately will you know, benefit the college as we look at taking care of these deferred maintenance issues that, as Derek has identified, that, you know, we need to take care of. Because ultimately, I mean, we have three million dollars of deferred maintenance, you, it's not reasonable. Sorry, my husband's phone's going off, it's not reasonable for us to think that we can pay for those out of just our general, you know, capital outlay budget, I mean, we'll never get ahead.
Point two five, I mean, it it's not going to go much lower than that.
You can't, you can't probably see it, but here's the evidence, point two five. Yeah. Uh, I was like, it's not going to go any lower, I mean, like, they're going to pay you to borrow money, so um, I think the time is is very, very prime, um. I am, you know, you don't want to say, well, thank goodness for COVID, but thank goodness for COVID because last year we thought the interest rates were really wa- good.
So is, based on his initial projections and and things could change yours as you finalize financing, but his initial projections, uh, for just half of the suites, savings would be around sixty three thousand, is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, it was sixty three thousand, um, three eighty six was the net cash savings.
For just half?
For just half.
For just half, so, you know, I would, there's no reason not to, the only reason we weren't looking at um, refinancing the other ones was because of the fight or because of the, of the, um, interest rate. And that's irrelevant right now, so I have reached out back, I've reached back out to him and, um, he can't, he needs some additional documentation that we have to get to him as far as the transition documents or whatever to make sure that everything is that everything, um, so we don't have to go to notice and protest and all that stuff, so it's just some, um, some documents that are probably in the safe, uh, at the college, but I'm in Kansas City and I haven't been able to get to them. But, um, so I don't have any, I don't have any hesitations, but, you know, we don't have that large, we don't have as much um, debt service, we have on the first set of apartments. We have in the principal one, two, three, four, five, six about six times, about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but, um, why not do it if, I mean, I would do, I would recommend that we do both suites at the same time if the board wants to retain the second part of the Wagner apartment, so I think that's what we need to identify first, but, um, so it's very favorable, um, I have no, I mean, we were ready to go before and, um, so I don't think there's anything subject to notice and protest. But we have to go through the motions, the original information that he sent to me was that we could have a settlement date of May first. It would be nice if we wanted to go forward to get the, um, financing settled before the next fiscal year, so we could properly account for all of that. Um, not to, not to make any rat, or, you know, ask you to make any rash decisions, it's just that you know, it's just cleaner if we can wrap it up and then s- start July first, knowing, um, what our debt, what our new debt service is.
Option two, how can we justify selling half of the apartments? Let me just, we're just
How can we justify it to the public? Because of occupancy, I mean, if if that was the option selected by the board, you know, what we, what we have as far as occupancy is not currently filling, uh, all of our lot of dead spaces that we have, so, I mean, the justification comes from not being able to fulfill what it is that we have right now.
Is there problems with those those buildings?
No, the buildings are, they're in good shape, I mean, obviously we have wear and tear and we have some issues that we need to address like the roofing, but uh, where we have those kinds of things.
The reason I would like to hold on to them is because West is sixty years old. It is, I mean, we have done little things, I remember when when we, when we didn't have the apartments and when we didn't have choices for kids, they didn't want to live in a confined, reformatory, I mean, that's wrong to say, but but they wanted choices and I know we have other choices, but um, if if that thing would go down, we would have no place to put three hundred kids. The other thing that is so good about the Wagner apartments, you talk about retention, the Wagner apartments are over there, they're close to the campus, it is a community. Retention is a big thing in housing. I just, I I know maybe we don't need it now in any of, the first case I just, I, I know maybe we don't need it now in any of, the first case, we would need it immediately. Part of retention, as I remember it, is building the community. And if you have students all over this town and they're not, they're not in wonderful environments. You, you look at some of the apartments. I just think, because, and when it comes time, because we will grow. And when it comes time, we're not going to be able to find anything this reasonable.
We're, we're charged, uh, reminding the board, we're charged to be that visionary for the college. Past maybe the two years or five years, but ten years, twenty years down the road. And yeah, we're in a slump. Um, but like, like Beth of the two is, you know, we will grow and we'll never get. Apartments or housing as close as those are. And, and we've done. Analysis of what a new dormitory or some kind of village would be. Um, and quite honestly, to go back to taxpayers. And say that that's more economical than something like this, which certainly is an asset and certainly will always hold value. And there will certainly be. A demand for it if, if we get into a situation. I, I, I don't think really selling is even. Should be on the table. That's my personal opinion, but certainly I think there's other ways. Again, when we look at assets, property and things like that, especially so close to campus, uh, it's just, I don't think that that's a. A viable option. Um, I think there's a lot of other things to be looked at before that. So, and certainly with the savings alone. And, and, and like we said, it, we're, twenty twenty six is payoff. For, and, and all, both of them will be paid off by twenty twenty six. You know, that's, as I say, that's, that's five years. That's a short. It's a short period of time. I mean, you know, if most people are looking at that in their house payment, five years away, they're jumping for joy. So.
Well, and probably the most pressing structural need that needs to be addressed on there is roofing, which we have now incorporated into. The project list there to deal with.
I think if nothing else, the savings on the interest rate change and refinancing is an investment for us. I mean. Worst case scenario, we have to sell it later.
Right.
We'll still be ahead of the game.
Exactly.
So.
It is an asset that's more than vehicles or anything else. So.
And I, I do wonder as we hopefully move to a post-COVID era. That some of these current high schoolers will. Want to be on campus because they've been lacking some of that activity in high school. That those that are maybe thirty miles away that might have stayed home and, and commuted might, I mean. We're in a COVID world right now. It's all just a guess, but.
And or possibly stay closer to home instead of going to the college. That's two states away.
Right.
Because if something were to happen again, you know. Yes, and affordable, transferable.
I'd like to see an appraisal. On these Wagner apartments. The things that are on here need to be done. They're not going to go away. They need to be done. If they're done, they're going to need to be paid for. Half of these apartments are not used and they're vacant. And we can liquidate some cash. By selling those apartments and then finding out how we're going to finish doing these projects as has been presented. I think I can justify that a whole lot better to the taxpayers. And going out and borrowing a whole bunch more money and keeping the Wagner apartments that are not used. But to me, if you got an asset that isn't being used. And you can lever that asset by selling it and put that money into something that is going to make your institution a better place. And more productive. That's what you need to think about doing. Hanging on to it, growth for growth sake right now is not something that we can. Set back and say, well, we're going to grow, we're going to grow. We don't know that. We're going into hard times whether you realize that or not, folks.
But if you look.
Hard times.
Leonard, if you look at our occupancy rate prior to. The, the, the pandemic, or whatever you want to call it, we were doing well. We have opportunities to rent those out to staff, to Hokeup staff, to Garden City staff. I went through a period of when we had three kids to a room and I, this is what I'm talking about. If something happens at West Hall, which could happen tomorrow. We had to go over to Wheatlands. The kids had to walk. They had to put up when, 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 when. Water heaters went out and everything else. They didn't replace them. Our kids were in terrible things over there. I just know. It, I think we can make up for it by renting that.
The one that you're talking about is true, but it can happen tomorrow. You can have water heaters going out tomorrow.
Well, I understand it. That, I just mentioned that as it was god awful over there at Wheatlands and the kids, we, the college. Was paying out the wazoo. The kids were only paying what they had here. And Wheatlands was able to do anything they wanted to with them.
Being a landlord is not the greatest thing in the world. And there's going to be maintenance costs that's going to continue on those apartments. And I think that's what has been presented, that.
But, but.
Maintenance costs.
Yeah, but he's got that figured in the occup, in the, uh, in the, uh. Whatever you want to call it. What are we talking about that? This, he's got it figured in, in some of that.
I know that, that we did rent them out, but at that same point, what panworms are we opening up for landlords in this town? They were taking away their.
There are landlords. You try to find an apartment in this town that is decent for decent money.
We are going great guns in Garden City and building apartments. And. You can talk about all these things that I'm an old man and I don't know what I'm talking about, but I remember the eighties that I remember going through a time. We had houses we couldn't sell. We had apartments we couldn't rent. We had, took us probably ten, fifteen years, if not twenty. To get to the point now that we do have an excess of apartments. History will repeat itself. And I don't want to be sitting here. And have that happen and us have things over there that we got to spend money on. To keep updated. So we can say, well, we thought we were going to have them rented. You tell me how many. I don't think any of you can tell me how many students in five years are going to be wanting to live on campus with all of the. The, the education they can get online. I don't think you know that.
I think that's the trepidation. Either way you look at this is we don't know and.
Yeah.
And we're all trying to have to. Be ready for the unknown. So, I mean, it is, it is hard to predict.
I'd much rather go into the unknown with some cash in my pocket as having debt service that I don't know how I'm going to serve.
So we talked about that, but then also, how do you? How do you go out and promote your college when you have no place to put the kids? I mean, it's, it's the flip side of things. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but you could say, well, we, we got no housing. Um, good luck on finding an apartment. I about didn't move to Garden City because I couldn't find an apartment when I first moved here ten years ago. It was, I was on my way back to Hayes and I was in Jetmore when I got a, I got a real estate agent to call me. Cause we weren't in a position to buy a house. And she said, I have an apartment. I said, I'll take it. I don't even care. And I was just about to move to Manhattan. So, I mean, I, it's a realistic thing. And I, I mean, I get it. I, it could go the other way. I mean, I, I don't know.
I think you have to, I mean, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cash payment right here for selling half of those apartments. To me doesn't compare to the value of having, um, close to campus housing.
Security.
Yeah, having it. Nice enough that your own daughter or son would feel comfortable being there. I would feel comfortable having them in there. The possibility that enrollment will continue to increase. I mean, we, we have to agree that. Population numbers are about the same. Kids' numbers are about the same. We would expect that our. Population of students would continue to grow. So.
Some of these kids come here with nothing, let alone a vehicle, you know, and transportation. They can walk. I, I mean, it's, it's.
The, the value of having it just exponentiates every year compared to a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cash out.
What occupancy do you have in the apartments right now?
Uh, I don't have that. I don't have that there right now.
Are they all rented?
No, they're not because that's what we're using for isolation quarantine. So we've set aside those there to be used for our pandemic planning.
If we ever get to the place like, like we used to have the, uh, ammonium refrigeration program. They brought people in. Now, if, if our technical areas start doing, and I'm not saying ammonium refrigeration. That is a perfect place to put those people. For a week, two weeks, six months, whatever the program is. I just, I just hate to let them go because. Where they are and. We may have apartments, but we've still. We've still got dumps in this town that we expect our kids to live in.
I'd hate to not let them go and find ourselves in a hole.
I wish I could buy them and sell them back to you.
And again, still remember that. By going through this refinancing, um, C O P, it will be a bit of a cost, a less cost. Which is interest rate will go down. What is the pleasure of the board? Would you like to? We need to make a decision today.
Interest rate you're going.
What's it cost and how long would it take to get an appraisal?
What would you do with that information?
Forget it.
Let's call for the question.
All right. So again, like we talked about at the beginning, we want to make a recommendation to administration. To prepare for our decision. So I would welcome any kind of motion in that type of format.
Well, you all know where I stand. I would recommend that we pursue option two, option one, excuse me.
I would second that.
So we have a motion in a second to, um, recommend option one. For administration to prepare for that and present it back in March. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Jeff?
I.
David, nay. Leonard, nay.
Like I.
Shanda, aye.
Marilyn, aye. So it's four to two, the option passes for option one.
To get further information. This does not mean this is what we're doing. This is.
This is just.
Bring us the information on this option. This, yeah, correct. So let us see what, what it actually looks like if we were to. Keep everything, then we can decide whether we move forward with that or something else.
Can I, can I just get a, can I get a clarification? How hard would it be to present option two as well? Side by side? Is that like a lot more legwork? I mean, I, I realize we've already established option one. Going to the board.
All right. I would recommend that if option one isn't, it costs us too much money, then we consider option two.
Well, and again, just being for time's sake, I'm, and that's all that I'm asking, you know, coming back to the board. I, I don't know. I'm just, just appeasing to this. I mean, I, I'm fully confident in an option. I'm just asking.
It's a good question.
The literature.
Because you want to put yourself further behind time. This isn't something that.
Well, yeah, if they want to, if they want to make timeline, that's all I'm asking.
Right.
And I thought.
Yeah, I mean, to the question as far as what the cost would be there on, on getting, getting an appraisal.
Not appraised. I, I'm just saying option two.
Bring both off.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we're. Sold.
I don't think any of us want to want option three. Is that not correct?
No.
Option three is a no, no.
Correct.
So on option two, then what you want to see would be. I mean, would we not need the appraisal value to know what it is that's.
Yeah, uh, well, again, just to get an appraisal and I know what a business appraisal cost. I mean, or, or even on a small building. I, I know there's, there's a significant amount of cost to there. Again, I still hold, I'm good with option one. I just was bringing up the question. Just for the sake, I'm.
So that way if we aren't pleased with what we hear, we're not waiting a whole nother month.
Yeah, but if there's a cost to incur, I say we hear what option one is, like we voted on. And then if that's not satisfying, next time we move an option two. I mean. Yeah, so.
You might be able to get a real estate agent to give you a rough idea what you get.
But let's try, we're four to two, we voted.
No, that's fine. I'm sorry, I brought it up. I know.
But and then if we don't like what we get, I'll go with you guys on number two.
This is too big not to hash out every possible question or what ifs that anybody might have.
You got taxpayers that have got a question, whatever you do.
Yeah, so, don't, don't ever apologize for asking one more question.
Like I said, I just, I, I didn't mean to convolute it and maybe we shouldn't have, you know.
Most scenarios include going forward with the C O P financing as far as bringing options to the table on finance. So option one and two, that's not going to deviate or change anything. I think what I'm hearing is, is do we want to bring back? Option two as far as what we believe, if it was to sell half of the Wagner, what it is that we believe the. Value on that would be for discussion at the March meeting.
I, I mean, without having to do an appraisal, say, worst case, I mean, what we bought them for. Yeah, I, I mean, I know that's kind of, that's, that's a terrible.
One point eight and we owe one point eight.
Yeah.
And I don't think you can, I think you can get somebody to do an appraisal without being a certified appraisal.
But then.
Which doesn't cost.
Kind of more what a listing agent might recommend is the sales price, not technically an appraisal, but what. Is that, is that fair? What a commercial Realtor would, would recommend?
As long as they don't express their opinion, it doesn't cost us much to get it that today's market might bring.
Yeah.
I don't think that the market's going to stay that high five years from now. We're going into hard times where you want to.
We can do a market value.
Would you like to make a second emotion to? Gather more.
Yeah, um, I, I, I take a, I, I would like to make a motion to just get a little bit more information. The, the, um, C O P doesn't change with the, um, with option two, but certainly if we can just get some. Maybe some, uh, make a motion to get some rough numbers as far as what the possibility of that Wagner apartment would sell for. Um, and, and freeing up, I mean. Again, ultimately it's freeing up just the three hundred and forty thousand dollar debt service. I mean, we can go off of that, right? I don't, does that make sense? Just. Make a motion that we, we gather a little bit more information of, of based on option two if option one doesn't pan out right. Sorry, I.
How about if we make, make a motion to get more information on option two, even if option is.
Right.
As option one is also invested in.
Yeah.
And I would second a motion with that. A little more explanation on.
Okay, so I don't want to be the naysayer, but we need specifics on what we're supposed to do. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever. I just need, make a motion to tell us what we need to do. As far as. The other apartments.
Question, why can we not find, because we're not going to do it till March, why can we not get the specifics? On what we voted for? If we don't like that, then we turn that down and go to option two.
Carla, if we had voted on number two, what would you have done then to bring back the information? That's what I would like to know.
Well, if, if we're going to vote to sell half of the Wagner apartments. We would go through our due diligence on, we would have to put it out for bid. Like you would do a purchase. We'd have to put it out for sale.
I think what Leonard was saying is if we chose to go with more information from option two, coming back next month, what would. coming back next month, what would you require? What would you, what would you need to be done?
Well, I mean, I need, so if you want us to get an appraisal, tell us to get an appraisal. Or, I mean, we just need clear action on what the expectation is of.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable getting an appraisal right now. I mean, it's just me, but.
Well, I think Derek sounded like we can get a good idea and see if we can get some information without having to go through the full business appraisal option. Is that feasible or not feasible?
That's what we want.
I think you could get a pretty good opinion, not an appraisal, but an opinion from one of the realtors that's in this community that is dealing in commercial or wherever. I don't wanna go out putting statements out that we have to do this and do that to the public. We're getting information to make a decision whether we think option two would be a better choice than option one.
So, having a qualified opinion from a realtor. Like, I guess my only, the thing that keeps going through my mind is I don't know that any of them are going to wanna have their name tied to what it is that they're qualified.
Right.
And it's what it would be if it hasn't gone through the appraisal process now. I mean, if we can go out and visit with a realtor and, and get someone to give us an opinion and let's satisfy what the board is wanting information on going back.
To make a, a decision like this, no.
When was the first, the last?
I mean, pardon?
When was the last appraisal?
When it was purchased in two thousand seventeen.
And then do we know, do we have that appraisal?
One point eight million.
We have the appraisal.
Yeah, I'm sure we do. We would have had to if they were going to close on the loan.
Carla says yes.
Yeah, we do.
And, and we owe one point eight million, so. I, I, I'm not gonna make a motion. I, I still, I stick with just option one for right now.
I think if you're gonna rely on appraisal information, it has to be legit. It has, I mean, we can't just ask somebody to do it as a favor because they're gonna stick their neck out on the line for a number. So, if we're gonna go that route, ask for the real deal.
You can ask for a statement of opinion. You don't have to have a certified audit.
But boy, does that make us sound like Chivo.
I, I'm, I, I don't, I'm, I'm perfectly fine where we're at, at option one. I don't wanna make a motion. I'm sorry I brought up, just.
I think it's a good question.
If anybody else wants to, I mean, that's certainly up to them, but.
No reason to make it, it'll go down.
No.
Leonard, um, please feel free to make your, uh, statement.
I think we're all interested in more information on option two, but figuring out how to approach that and how to word that is beyond me. That's, I mean, I think that's where, where we're kind of hitting a wall right now.
I think the crossroads are without going out and getting an appraisal, you're not going to have accurate information. I mean, because we can say, we have the information to say we purchased it four years ago at one point eight million and currently owe one point eight million. If we were to sell, that would free up three hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of debt service. So, to know to the good what we would have there as part of that service. So, without coming back with a qualified audit, I don't, I don't know what other information.
And, and I will still say, yes, we're, we wanna run on this as fast as we can. And certainly Carla says, you know, it'd be nice to have the timeline so we can be done by May first and have a closing date. Um, if it goes one month more and we don't have it, I mean, we'll work around it. If, if it comes out option one isn't what to liking, I just, I, I mean, yes, we, we wanna be. And if they get information to us earlier, then, then maybe the possibility of, of looking at it. I just, like you said, yeah, I don't know how op- option two can necessarily work without.
What you're gonna have in March, I think what you'll have at the March meeting is gonna provide you some additional information. What you're gonna have at the March meeting based off of the motion that was approved will be refinancing on both sets of the Bronfuster Suites, so we will know what the savings would be on that. Additionally, we would know then from that, I don't know what it is that our debt service could be freed up if we were to go with option two. Because at the end of the day, even if we get an appraisal and it's at two million dollars, it's freeing up the debt service for the next five years of three hundred and forty thousand. We have two hundred thousand to the good that will come back to the college. So, I, I mean, I think the information or the answers you're looking for are needing to take a look at what truly we're gonna have on, on cost savings if we refinance. And that will give you a clearer direction of whether in March we wanna keep or go out for an appraisal, in, in my opinion.
Maybe we just need to take this one step at a time and quit trying to do two steps at once.
Yeah, we're not making, I, and we're not making a motion to do.
It's not a motion.
It's just for information. Let's.
Yeah.
Let's get.
I think there's too many cards until we know, like you said, the details of that. I, that's.
And then, then from there, we can decide if we need to go for an appraisal and go deeper that way. And, I mean, the May timeline would be great, but if it can't be offered by then, it's not the end of the world.
I think we're back to going ahead with option one as the motion was first presented. Okay, and then we'll listen to what they have to present if there's any other information on the appraisal of the Bronfuster Suites. Okay.
Can I see that appraisal sometime that we had originally?
Sure.
Who wrote that appraisal? Do you know?
Uh, do you know who you should work? We would have it on record in the business office.
Yeah, I have it in my office, but I really don't know off the top of my head.
All right, um, we're at ownership linkage. Is there any other things there? Ownership linkage.
Well, I just wanted to commend the nursing department and the nursing students that we have on the. The accolades they got from the hospital dealing with that family.
Anything else?
Have we had anything come in off of the website for us to get made it up?
Okay, I have one more thing that I just wanted to report. And that involved the meetings that we've had with President Ruda. Both Beth and I have attended three meetings in the past month. Um, in the first meeting, we talked about the president's evaluation and our timeline for doing that. And, um, so we, I, we worked it out so that we would have the evaluation um, in, that we would conduct the evaluation in March. Human Resources would compile the information in April. At the April board meeting, we would review in executive session um, the compilation and then have a second executive session and offer that, um, evaluation or talk to President Root about it so that in May, at the board meeting, we can offer a contract to him to renew. And then in June, if there's any negotiation of salary, we could do that prior to July first and, um, the new calendar year starts. So, I can write that all out for you guys in an email to remind you about it. Um, and then we also talked about board self-assessment. And we are planning, um, in April probably to have another retreat to, um, work out the board self-assessment tool and how we're gonna proceed with that. And then my thought was that the board self-assessment would be in June after we complete the president's evaluation. And then in July, we'd be able to talk about it at the open board meeting. So. Um, just wanna give you that information. Um, reminding you that you do have, we have a board of trustees retreat this Saturday, February thirteenth, um, eight AM. We'll have breakfast.
Here or over there?
Uh, trying to decide. Okay. Here for right now, but we're checking out another room on campus with being, okay, see if that's gonna be more suitable.
Okay.
Will you bring these chairs?
The, the retreat starts at eight thirty, it'll go to eleven thirty.
But we come at eight for breakfast.
Yes, you are welcome. And if the room changes, you guys will let us know.
We have a meeting with her tomorrow and then once, once we know for sure, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, upcoming calendar dates, there's lots of athletics that are, um, mentioned there. So, if you guys get a chance, try to send us some of those. There's no executive session. Well, does anybody have any other items they'd like to talk about?
Well, no, just.
Okay, um, I'm gonna say, let's adjourn the meeting. Thank you for enduring this one.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, you know why?
No, no, that's a good idea. Oh, there's my stuff.